And today is Thursday, September fourteenth. Um and what we have here are counselors Hawk and McKim, myself, counselor myself, counselors Iverson and Crossley in the Nat U Hill Room. Uh, counselor Deckard is not joining us quite yet. I believe he's on his way. And I do not know if counselor Munson is on, but she is also not present. Oh, she is on. I see now. Thank you. She's in the attendees, so she could be promoted. And that, yep, that would be fantastic. Thank you. We're going to go ahead and move to the adoption of our agenda. Um, does anyone wish to add or remove anything from tonight's agenda? No, 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 all right. Then we will move on and go ahead and get started. Um, since this is a new night with a new audience for most of us, I want to welcome everyone to our 2024 budget review work session and remind everyone that this is not the final approval of our 2024 Monroe County annual budget and nor is it a um, final uh, formal budget hearing. The public hearing is scheduled for Thurs- for Tuesday, October third at five thirty P M. And the budget final adoption will occur on Tuesday, October seventeenth at five thirty P M. Both of those meetings are here in the Nat U Hill Room and on Zoom. And the public can make comment regarding the budget during those meetings. For this evening, departments are invited um, to join us in order to present their budget. And as a reminder, departments and um, other uh, segments of of local government um, are given allotted time for the budget review. This is just based on how much time we spent on last year's budget review um, to kind of give us a guide and keep us on task. As always, uh, council can extend your time and um, we'll take the time that we need to to look through the budget. Um, however, we do want to be mindful that most, that our discussion stays focused on the budget requests. And if we need to um, open a, a discussion on a different item, um, well, we can re- kind of reserve the right to ask our council administrator to uh, reach out and schedule a time for discussion at our next available regular or work session. So during um, each budget review, the department may be asked to explain any increases, decreases, or additions to the 2024 budget proposal. Council members will then be given an opportunity to ask questions. Um, they can make recommendations to increase or decrease account lines based on the discussion and or need of the department. Council will then vote on moving forward with the department's reviewed budget request. Again, this is not the final approval of the budget, but it is a recognition of the requests presented or as amended by council. Uh, are there any questions about the process? I think we're up here, we kind of got it figured out. Um, number four is a overview on revenues and expenditures. Are there any updates that you'd like to share um, Michelle? Or anyone else on council um, to the budget numbers based on changes from last night's session?
To the um, to their budgets and so uh, you can see that we now have um, a grand total in the general fund of forty six million, six eighteen, zero twenty nine of budget requests. So we have uh, put back into the general fund from the budgets nine hundred and fifty eight thousand plus some dollars. Uh, the lit public safety, we now have a budget request amount of three million, nine forty eight, one ninety eight. And we've been able to put back into uh, two hundred and seventy three, oh twenty six. Uh, the sales disclosure and the auditors and eligible also um, made some changes. But we added two of the sales disclosure, we moved the others, the split pay into the uh, sales disclosure fund, so that increased those requests by uh, twenty eight thousand plus. And then with the auditors and eligible, uh, we put um, into the contractual a, an increase of fifty thousand. So that's where we stand right now with those budgets.
Great, thank you. Are there uh, questions or comments?
It, it appears that those numbers have been updated on the draft four B.
Oh, yes, I, I did just update those. I've, we've been working on trying to get things in, yes. I did update everything into the draft four B, so that's where we're at.
Very good.
Do, would you like to see the draft four B, everyone, or are you guys good with what we're doing?
I'm, I'm happy to take a quick look, actually, since it was just changed.
Um, Jeff, I'm sorry, I, can you get to it? I, for some rea- I can't get it through our box.
You got it?
Well, if you've already got it up.
Yeah, let me share my.
Yeah, 'cause I'm not connected to Zoom, so.
Yep. All right, there it is. And uh, tell me where you want me to drive.
So, so if you look, um, we're now actually um, in a, uh, I mean technically, we're now budgeted in a surplus in the general fund of over a million dollars. Uh, now, of course, we've done that so that we can free up that money then to give uh, a substantial cost of living increase. But I mean, you know, I think we've done a really good job.
We're getting there. Counselor Iverson?
Yeah, if, if we go two columns over into the health category, there's a uh, that deficit of a little over in a million and a half. But as we talked with them last night, uh, we, we know that they're getting that opt in dollars. So will that number change significantly?
Yeah, it'll be decreased by probably a million, about around a million dollars.
So if you go over to this frozen levy amount, the total for the frozen levy, that, I mean, that's really gonna help that situation a lot.
Yeah, it, it'll be pretty much technically within ba- within balance before we add in the.
That's right, before we add in the cost of living.
Great. Thank you for going over that. Um.
We stop sharing, or are we good?
Yes, I think that's fine. Thank you. Um, don't want to do any more review if unless necessary. Are there any que- other questions from council? I'm going to assume not. And I would like now to now invite Tom McGlasson, our solid waste management district director, to join us um, for our binding review of the solid waste management district budget. Since uh, counselor Deckard isn't here, can I just give you that?
Council, I moved open for discussion review fund eight two one zero solid waste management special operating category requests of personnel, one million, five hundred fifty seven thousand, six hundred forty five dollars, supplies, one hundred ninety nine thousand, one hundred dollars, services, one million, two hundred ninety seven thousand, se- fifty dollars, capital, ten thousand dollars for a total of three million, sixty three thousand, seven hundred ninety five dollars.
Second, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Um, good evening, uh, as always, appreciate your time and and consideration, uh, reviewing our budget. Uh, um, we just, uh, I guess I'll just uh, briefly uh, run through. Uh, I think this is pretty straightforward budget. Uh, we do not have a lot of significant uh, you know, changes uh, from the previous year uh, for the current year's budget, so we'll just run through some of the more significant changes. And then uh, of course, we'd be happy to to answer any questions or adding additional information that's requested, so. Um, in the personnel services category, um, uh, we alternate uh, between a, doing a percentage wage increase and a flat wage increase. Uh, this year, we were scheduled to do a flat wage increase, uh, that uh, so the twenty twenty four budget has a two thousand dollar fr- flat wage increase proposed uh, for all employees. Uh, that was based on applying uh, the C P I uh, W index to the median uh, wage of all uh, district employees. Um, and so the, the, the other increases in that category then are pretty much related uh, to that wage increase. Um, e- except for the, for the wellness clinic, we, we do uh, also utilize the Everside Health Clinic uh, that, that the county has uh, and do pay for that service. Uh, they've advised, we're probably looking at about a ten percent uh, increase uh, for uh, fees for that next year. Um, uh, and that's pre- pretty much it for the personnel services category. Uh, in the supplies category, the, the really only significant uh, increase is in our orange bag purchase. Uh, and that is un- unfortunately, a, a contractual increase. Uh, we did um, about a year and a half ago uh, put that uh, that supply out for bid, um, and we did only receive one response. Uh, uh, it was from our, our current provider at that time, uh, so, but uh, but their response, um, unfortunately, given the economic conditions at the time that have an escalator clause in it, so we have to account for that in our budget. Uh, in the, the, the services category, um, uh, our laboratory fees, um, uh, does with everything else, uh, costs are going up. Uh, they've advised us of what they anticipate their increases to be uh, for the services that we use. That's uh, we've estimated that at about a five thousand dollar increase for next year. Uh, in the other professional services category, we have a significant increase, fifty one thousand dollars. Uh, however, uh, fifty thousand of that is a request made by our board uh, to appropriate funds dedicated or earmarked uh, for uh, something that we can, we're still looking, but we want to do something related to organics, uh, food waste collection and composting and uh, do things to, to divert that from the waste stream and keep that from going to a landfill or an incinerator, so. Uh, so the board requested that appropriation, um, and we are, you know, l- looking for projects um, for services that we can uh, get involved in that will help divert that material from the waste stream. Um, utility costs, uh, I think as everybody else is experiencing, uh, are, are going up. Um, and uh, we, uh, we do have a, a, a fairly significant increase, sixty seven hundred dollars in our machinery and equipment rental. Uh, the bulk of that unfortunately is related to, um, we, we do have, um, I think three pieces of equipment we have to rent twice a year when we do our groundwater sampling uh, at the closed landfill. Um, and uh, th- those vendors have advised that there'll be increases on those rental fees next year. Um, uh, the leachate disposal uh, of about seven thousand. Um, and that's just, that's the number that unfortunately does tend to increase, but fluctuates year to year. Um, and that's really based on a leachate generation anticipation, um, uh, that we've, you know, learned to, to estimate based on previous year's experience, so. Um, household hazardous waste disposals going up, um, that actually is more of a volume related increase than a fee increase. Um, and we do have a, a, a significant decrease in um, our other collection disposal contracts. That's our orange bag program, bulky items, um, and uh, the environmental compliance, illegal dumpster mediation uh, disposal. Um, but almost fourteen thousand dollars. And that's uh, and that's just, you know, related to trends and experience that we're seeing and um, and adjusting that number accordingly. Uh, the hauling contract is going up, a nine thousand dollars. Uh, that's another one that's a contractual escalator clause uh, that we just have to build into the budget. Um, we are also uh, anticipating about a twelve thousand dollar decrease in our glass hauling. Uh, that is related to the opening of the rump key facility. Um, actually, I have a meeting scheduled with them next week and we do anticipate uh, being able to divert our glass uh, currently being hauled directly to Indy from our facilities uh, to that facility. Um, which should result in a, in a significant decrease. Um, uh, for the record, wood note glass is one of the few commodities that we deal with that's not currently under contract um, with a specific hauler or vendor. So we have that ability for that material. Um, tire recycling fees are uh, are going down about four thousand dollars. Um, and that's, that's, that's a new program that we just implemented about a year ago. Uh, and so that's really just an adjustment based on the numbers that we're seeing. We kind of overestimated the volume of tires that we anticipated when we started that program. Um, and our recycling expense going down about seventeen thousand, five hundred. That's just a trend adjustment based on the volumes uh, that we're seeing coming through our facilities, so. Um, and uh, yeah, other than that, in the capitals, um, with fifteen hundred dollar decrease, so that's what, we had a computer budgeted, computer purchase budgeted this year. We don't anticipate any um, any, any equipment purchases this year. We kind of have a, uh, you can see in there, we have a, a standing um, uh, ten thousand dollar appropriation uh, for other improvements. Uh, that's a, a landfill dedicated appropriation. That's kind of a what-if, uh, just in case appropriation, so. So quickly and in a nutshell, that's our twenty twenty four proposed budget. Be happy to answer any questions?
Thank you.
I'd like to make mention that counselor Deckard is in person now.
Thank you. Yes, welcome. Counselor McKim?
Just wanted to uh, state as the uh, president of the solid waste district board that the board did review uh, this budget multiple times and supported it unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Counselor Crossley?
Yes, thank you. I was curious. I wanted to go back. You have mentioned that recycling is down seventeen five um, because of the volume. Is you, you said that. I guess I'm curious, is it because people aren't like recycling at all? Like, what do you mean by that?
Well, not, none, um, it's, I guess, part of it is, um, part of it is still a- adjusting that appropriation because that expense is, is something that um, we, we weren't uh, subject to until about three years ago. Um, and so, you know, we, we're still adjusting that, that appropriation to match what we're actually expending. Uh, but we are, uh, our recycling volume numbers are down slightly in the past couple of years. Um, you know, it is, is that um, because people are recycling less? I, I don't mean, are they producing less? You know, it, it could be also be that they're, you know, making more, making other changes on their, on their purchasing or whatever, and there's just not that much material out there. It could also be that they're not recycling as much of that material as they used to. That, we don't know.
Okay. You said you've seen that decrease over the past couple of years now?
Um, y- yeah, it has, it has been a decreasing trend.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, counselor Munson?
Thank you. I'm happy to see this budget. It looks very familiar, uh, similar to budgets of the solid waste district in the past. And I just wanted to comment that um, the decrease in costs for glass recycling is very welcome and uh, it's very good to see that. So thank you. No questions.
Uh, counselor Hawk?
Uh, yes, I'm uh, interested uh, in your discussion about reduction in the amount of recycling you're seeing. And uh, I think there's a lot of families that are looking at, this is what it costs me to put gas in the car. And by the time they've done that, uh, they have to make choices. So this may, I'm not saying that's what it, it is, but it certainly could add to the situation, I believe. Uh, so we might see an uptick in recycling once the gas prices go down and people feel like this, uh, they can put the gas in the car to, to go where they need to recycle.
We, we could. I mean, the disposable income certainly factors in uh, to waste generation uh, for, for most everybody, yeah. Uh, a- and as the economy turns around, uh, you know, some of the, some of those numbers may change. Uh, I would just, you know, for the record, I've, you know, I'm, I'm confident that our budget will be able to manage uh, you know, you know, any increases uh, that we might see and uh, in, in the, in the unlikely event that, that we can't, I, you know, for the record, um, you know, uh, you would note on our, our Form four B, uh, you know, our, our estimated uh, cash balance at the end of twenty twenty four is in excess of three million dollars. We certainly have our reserve funds available that could be appropriated to cover anything.
Other questions from council? I'm interested in um, the. I'm interested in the rental equipment you mentioned for, I think you said groundwater sampling that you do twice a year. What is the equipment that you use and how much would it cost? You might not have just looked at this recently, I get it, but do you have any idea how much it costs to buy that equipment?
The most expensive piece is we have it's it's a water quality meter that the water coming being pumped out of the wells has to flow through that measures a number of parameters on it, things like dissolved oxygen, pH, turbidity, conductivity. And the last that we looked at that was about two years ago, and that was a ten to twelve thousand dollar piece of equipment to purchase. And one of the other considerations to take into account, you know, when you purchase something like that, is the maintenance of it. And and being able to certify to the state when we send those results that 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 meter was properly calibrated. It would actually be be something that our, you know, staff would have to calibrate multiple times throughout the year. Not significant, but obviously there's there's a cost in purchasing the the solutions. And you know, and being able to to do that and certify to the state, you know, is if we can't do that to the state's satisfaction, I could call into question the results that we're sending them.
Are those results part of what go into the laboratory costs? I mean, are you having to send things off in in addition?
No, tho- those are field readings that we do off of that that instrument. Then the samples that 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 get pumped through that meter are then collected and bottles with various preservatives in them based on the parameters. And, you know, we do, if if we're doing a a shortlist event, what we call a shortlist event, that's about a hundred and seventy five different parameters that are the water is analyzed for. Every third event is what we call a long list event. And that's over two hundred and fifty parameters that the water is analyzed for.
Thank you. I appreciate that information. If there are there other questions? Yes, Council Deckard?
I apologize for coming in late on what I know was, I'm sure, a very spectacular discussion that you had. And I had a question. I often use one of your facilities and it always intrigues me to ask you questions about processes and things. When someone brings in materials such as the fluorescent lights that, you know, some of us have a few here, there are some businesses have a lot, or there. When they bring that in, how much of a burden does that then become on your processing, dealing with them, getting rid of them, et cetera? Do you, can you talk about that?
You know, under, in a normal circumstances, a resident bringing, you know, talking specifically about materials to go through our household hazardous waste facility. You know, and the residents bringing those materials in, you know, we have, you know, we have processes, we have a system in place and it's you know, it's it's pretty streamlined and and things flow very smoothly. You know, large quantities can create, you know, somewhat of a hiccup. But we can manage those. You know, we we do ask that if somebody thinks that they have a larger quantity of materials, call ahead, schedule something. And I would would also note that, you know, we do have some some limitations on what kind of dealings we can do with businesses and commercial entities due to our exempt status under the RECA regulations that that we want to maintain. So if we started taking materials commercial entities, we might start dealing in volumes that would jeopardize that RECA exemption.
Yeah. Well, thank you very much. And I want to compliment those processes because it's always, everything's always very easy and very clear. And the thing that I would love to figure out one day is, I know that your folks are very diligent on making sure the 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 products have come from within the county. And I would be very curious one day, and again, we don't have to answer that today, or maybe even think about it yet, for products that are outside the county, how, is there a mechanism by which other communities could assist us with this operation? So that there's not a big pile of fluorescent bulbs that are hitting outside the county line and therefore getting into water. All that stuff that we don't want, but maybe we have an answer those communities could buy into.
Well, we have, we have done some things with some neighboring county solid waste districts in the past. We don't currently have any recurring program or, you know, collection events in in place. But, you know, what we what we also look at there is that we're funded by Monroe County Property Tax Dollars. And so we try to make sure that our services are specific to the people that are funding us.
Yeah, I get it. I'd love to figure out a way that others could opt in and we could get regional. Because it's when I think of the lake and just, we're all in this in some strange way together. And maybe down the road, we could look at that. And that might encourage other communities to do their own portions perhaps down the way. So.
We 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 can certainly continue to to reach out to the neighboring solid waste districts and, you know, see what they're willing to do to work with us to bring materials into our facility.
Well, thank you very much. And I I appreciate everything that you you've done and all that you tell us about with it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Are there other questions on this budget? Hey, seeing none. May I have a roll call vote on moving forward with the solid waste management's twenty twenty four? Special operating budget. That's what we're talking about.
Councilor Hawk?
Yes.
Council Iverson?
Yes.
Council McKim?
Yes.
Council Munson?
Yes.
Council Wiltz?
Yes.
Council Crossley?
Yes.
Council Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Now we're at five A to G.
Council, I move to open for discussion and review. Fund eight two eight three, solid waste district debt service category requests of, in the services category, three hundred and four thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars for a total of the same.
Second.
All right, this one's pretty.
Uh, yeah, this is the debt service fund budget. This is related to the bond that was taken out in two thousand and seven to close the landfill. It's 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 pretty straightforward, slightly less than it was last year, as tends to be the case. Since I've I've been asked by our board and I've been asked in the past by the council, a little note for the record, the final payment on that bond is due on February first of twenty twenty seven. So we're we're close. We're getting there. And we'd be glad to be have that out from under us.
Questions from council? Council Iverson?
I just wanted to thank you for providing the historical view of those interest payments. It's nice to see them go down.
Any other questions on the debt service fund? Could we have a roll call vote on moving forward with the solid waste management's debt service budget request?
Council Iverson?
Yes.
Council McKim?
Yes.
Council Munson?
Yes.
Council Wiltz?
Yes.
Council Crossley?
Yes.
Council Deckard?
Yes.
Council Hawk?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Council, I move to open for discussion and review fund twelve fifteen, solid waste. Pardon me. Solid Waste District Non-Reverting Capital Category requests of, in the capital category, three million four hundred fourteen thousand eighty dollars and a total of the same.
No way. Yeah.
All right. I'm gonna correct my previous way out of control motion. And I'm gonna stay instead for this capital category, forty five thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars and a total of the same.
Second.
Uh, yeah. This is a confusing budget that we we have to do every year. But this is a non-reverting capital improvement fund that the district established some years ago prior to me becoming director, that we we really don't contribute to currently. But DLGF has advised us that we should we should request and have approved a zero appropriation budget so that we have the budget on file. So if the need arises to use money out of this fund, it's there, we can request the appropriation to do so. So this is actually a zero appropriation budget that currently has a fund balance of forty five thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars.
Interesting. Questions from council?
Yeah, so I guess, I guess then, why are we appropriating forty five thousand? If you really want zero appropriation.
DLGF asked him to? Is that what you're saying?
The sheet that I'm looking at shows zero. It just has a fund total of forty five thousand five hundred and fifteen.
Oh. Oh.
Okay, council, I move we set the line, capital building improvements to zero.
Second.
It is confusing. I I apologize.
And we definitely don't need three and a half million dollars.
Then we definitely don't need that.
I'll take the three million if you want to give it to.
It's day five. I'll just, that's all I got. Are there questions on the motion to reset to zero? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Council McKim?
Yes.
Council Munson?
Yes.
Council Wiltz?
Yes.
Council Crossley?
Yes.
Council Deckard?
Yes.
Council Hawk?
Yes.
Council Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you. Are there questions further on this budget? All right. And so could we have another roll call on the approval of moving forward with this non-reverting capital fund?
Council Munson?
Yes.
Council Wiltz?
Yes.
Council Crossley?
Yes.
Council Deckard?
Yes.
Council Hawk?
Yes.
Council Iverson?
Yes.
Council McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That concludes our review. Excuse me. So we will now move to item B. Where do we get? Five B, which with the Monroe Fire Protection District.
Council, I move to open for discussion and review. Fund eight six zero three, special fire general with category requests of, in personnel, thirteen million four hundred eighteen thousand nine hundred ninety dollars. In supplies, five hundred one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. In the services category, one million seventy five thousand dollars. For a total of fourteen million nine hundred ninety five thousand two hundred and forty dollars.
Welcome, Chief Diller.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. I'm having a little bit of difficulty hearing this evening, so if I say huh or ask questions, then I I apologize.
Okay.
So just kind of keeping with what we've done in previous years. Just a quick background. This year's budget, the twenty twenty two actuals do include the current geographical area proposed in twenty twenty four. So there's no additional townships. The actuals for twenty twenty two are the same as what you would be looking at in twenty twenty four. In years past, that has been different and it's made it complicated. This year's most straightforward it's been for a while. With that said, this budget really includes changes that have been talked about since two thousand and seventeen. The twenty twenty five budget will be the last year that includes the phasing in of personnel. So we're the second to last year of doing that. Now, running through the categories. In personnel category, there's a four percent cost of living adjustment applied to all of the paid positions. There is an additional fire marshal position, which was part of that long-term plan. And is something that this year specifically, we have realized, probably should have been in the twenty twenty three budget. The amount of commercial properties that we have been inspecting and re-inspecting is much higher than what was originally anticipated back in what would have been twenty twenty. So that is definitely a needed position. This includes six additional full-time firefighters. Originally, the plan called for eight in two thousand and twenty four. But after last year's large recruit class, we decided we'd like to keep that number a little smaller. So as of right now, the eight would be pushed back to twenty twenty five instead of the six that were planned in twenty twenty five. With those six additions, there's increases calculated in the incentive qualifications line, the officer pay line, the substitute emergency overtime training and special event line, the uniform allowance line, health insurance, the seventy seven fund employer contribution. Get in our budget, you'll notice there are two separate firefighter lines. When the merger occurred, there were some individuals in regular perf and other firefighters in seventy seven fund. As a seventy seven fund department, all new hires must go into that line. So eventually, years down the road, as folks retire, there'll be just one line for all firefighters. And then the life insurance line, which I'll talk about in just a bit. Holiday pay, adding the six firefighters is two additional per shift day. So we need to account for two firefighters additionally on duty for each of the ten fire district holidays. The administrative assistants, we have looked at that pay increase to align it once again with the PATD grade from Monroe County's pay scale in twenty twenty three this year. Now, next year, we'll be moving that line in unison with the other salary lines. And it will adjust with the fire district cost of living adjustment. Medicare, based on figures, we see an additional need of seven thousand dollars in that line for the forecasted needed twenty twenty four's budget. The six new firefighters increases that employee line in the seventy seven fund to seventy six. We do, fully staffed in twenty twenty four would require an additional ten thousand in life insurance. That line was lower this year because we've not had all of those positions filled. We actually exhausted our hiring list with the last four individuals. And we're out of folks to hire for now. So we will be starting a process, probably advertisement-wise, late this year and complete that in early twenty twenty four to get positions filled. One new line here is the post-employment health insurance line. This has been done in cooperation with the local fifty three forty three. The sixty thousand dollars is a matching contribution by all full-time personnel in which we're looking to offer a post-employment health insurance option. A lot of departments contribute funds additionally to retirement funds. The four fifty seven is common. But we wanted to look at something specifically for health. You know, firefighting is consistently in the top stressful positions and it's directly linked to a lot of chronic illnesses. The district has experienced a lot of folks who, in their early years of retirement, came down or were diagnosed with job-related illness. And this is something that has been an important topic to our members, if you will, for for quite some time. So that is new. And that wraps up the personnel category. As far as supplies go, as Councilor Hawk mentioned earlier, fuel prices have creeped up again here at the end of twenty twenty three. We were under budget earlier this year, but prices have steadily increased. So we show a seven percent increase over this year's budget. There's a ten percent increase in the vehicle maintenance supply category. That is because we are intending to put apparatus in service at the Washington Township Station in twenty twenty four. We are currently in the process of getting a bid packet together to look at the site work this year with building construction next year. So that is something that we are looking forward to getting done, getting in service and behind us. With building construction next year. So that is something that we are looking forward to getting done, getting in service and behind us. In the services category, um general insurance, you know, based on claims that we've had. Um and quotes that are provided by our insurance providers. Um workers' compensation insurance, uh this increase is based on uh the results of claims. This was another one of those tricky ones that is now kind of normalizing, if you will. Um when the district was smaller. The claims resulted in this, to be honest with you, us coming out ahead in the insurance world. But as things have right-sized, uh we're getting to where the premium increases reflect the losses of the larger district. Which is approximately forty percent larger uh than before. That is pretty much it for the general.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Um are there questions uh from councils? Am I right?
I was trying to find your four B. Um do we have? I'll just ask you. Uh have you determined what you think that rate's going to be? Is the rate going to stay the same, lower, or go up?
It's, it's very close to staying the same. Uh the rate for the general fund is being advertised at point two five four six. That's with ninety five, ninety seven percent NAV estimated. So as the net assessed value comes in at one hundred percent, our rate will be ninety or point two four. Drumroll. Point two four seven zero, which this year we're at two four five four.
Very close.
You know, we have someone very interested in that, so I'll send him a little email.
Good.
Uh years ago, we had someone who really watched the budget when it was just the period, their great budget. And we always knew we came out ahead when he seemed to be happy. And so we have somebody else who's very interested, and I I'm grateful. You know, that the public's watching and helps us stay on top of making sure the public hears what you have to say. Uh to that end, I I encourage you every year, I say this, I'm gonna say it again. I would love for you to start having your meetings here when you're going over budgets. So that we can capture it on cats or we can make sure that uh we can hear what is being said. But it's because it's difficult. I know you do the Zoom meetings and we can go on that, but it is very difficult to follow in your meeting room. And this, this room is set up better. It's still not perfect, but it's better. So.
Other questions from council?
Are you, are you gonna talk a little bit more about the um Washington Township uh construction?
Correct, yeah. So so one thing I I would like to to note on those rates, um we've got a document that. We're still finalizing and and it will send out and post on our website. But the projection at this time last year on August the eighteenth of twenty twenty two. Was to have a rate of point two five two oh, so we're still coming in slightly below that. Uh last year, we expected the twenty twenty three rate to be at point two five three zero. We came in lower than that. The biggest issue that we've had again in this first few years is that juggling of the miscellaneous revenue lines. As the different equations and calculations for those various lines come in and the state pieces numbers. It never seems that our estimations were spot on. They're always close. But that rate increase this time around is is an increase, no doubt. But it is within the margin of error of those stats.
Counselor Iverson?
Yeah. Uh thank you for being here. Can we go back to the budget? I have a question on the personnel lines. Please and thank you. Uh one of the, in in our conversations, one of the the things that's really been a eureka moment for me. Is to learn that you don't just do fire, but you also are probably a lot of times the first on the scene. And uh that the, and so in, I am looking at line eighty two thirty one ambulance staffing. Is is set at zero, and I know that we've been working on some funding for different services there. I kinda wanted to, you know. See how, you know, what are the plans there and um not not necessarily in the personnel lines specifically, but just in general, you know, how's that going?
So um miraculously, we received VIN numbers for three of the four ambulances today.
Oh my goodness.
Uh which is exciting because that means the chassis have arrived at factory. And we can start looking at receiving those sometime soon. Uh most likely, at least one of them in the month of October. That's exciting for us. Um. We still have lots of conversations to have in the EMS world as far as how the fire district's ambulance service is going to. Uh fill the role in Monroe County. Uh the important thing for us is to say that. When we put in the request to you all in the commissioner's office, it was for two ambulances to immediately back up the current ambulance provider. Make one available for special events to alleviate some of the workload that they're picking up. And to have one in reserve so that when we're maintaining or utilizing those vehicles, we have one in a ready state. By the end of this year, those resources are going to be available, and the fire district is going to be able to utilize them. The tricky part will be how we staff those ambulances um in unison with the current EMS providers. Will there be others that come out when the the ambulance service goes live at the fire district? We don't know. Um we know that based on need of upcoming counties coming into the county. There's approximately a thousand calls per year that the fire district may alleviate uh running the role that we're talking about. However, we also know that there are areas that IU Health has to take an ambulance from the city. Um and take it to an exterior area in the county. And that takes a a longer time for them to respond and then return. So there may be areas where it's beneficial for us to take those calls. Our folks are probably responding anyway. And and we have to hash those things out, but um we'll have our BLS transport sometime in early twenty twenty four. We will likely have ALS capabilities sometime by the end of the year. And we're excited for the opportunity. The reason the line is in there and is zeroed is initially, some of the staffing that we put in those ambulances will probably be some of those new hires from the firefighter line. As revenue becomes to, begins to come in. Uh from the ambulance service, we would love to put those firefighter positions back into their original purpose. And hire folks in that ambulance staffing line, so I apologize, I missed putting that in my explanation sheet.
No, it it actually, it's one of the really exciting things that are happening, particularly when. You know, we hear about the need that exists in the community and the potential, if we didn't have this resource for. Uh a lot of negative things to happen. So I'm really glad that you're in the space now and you're taking care of it now.
Counselor Hawk, um yes, um not long ago. Uh I was in conversation uh whether it was with you or perhaps um parochial from Elsville. Was that you were going to be working together in that station and um on off of Curry. So you want to talk a little bit about how that plan is moving forward or what what you're doing with that?
Sure, yeah. So um earlier this year, um Elsville Fire Department and the Fire District um initiated an all-out. Um automatic aid agreement. So we are sending our resources based on AVL, which is Automatic Vehicle Locator. So the closest unit is responding to uh any call in either of our jurisdictional areas. Uh in those conversations, we discussed the fire station on Curry Pike. Uh which has drastically helped part of the fire district response area just south of Curry and, you know, in his third street. So the discussion was that station has two personnel in it currently. Would the district be interested in shifting two personnel there to make that a fully-crewed uh fire company, if you will? Um and we are certainly looking to move to do that. Uh we had a meeting earlier today and we discussed placing one full-time firefighter there with one additional part-time firefighter. Along with the full-time and part-time firefighter from Elsville. So as that shakes out, uh which will be in January, January first, hopefully. Um there will be an additional fully-staffed firehouse on Curry, uh fifty percent staffed by the district, fifty percent by Elsville. It's a big deal. Um for station twenty nine by the airport, it means that a full-engine company is responding from just minutes away and vice versa. Um station seventy one in Elsville uh will have a fully-staffed engine coming instead of uh, you know, a driver with one packed up, ready-to-go firefighter, so. Big increase in the the fire service world in that area.
Thank you. Good to hear. Council McCam?
I was just wondering, have there been any developments uh with respect to an automatic, automatic aid agreement with uh City of Bloomington Fire Department?
Uh several months ago, had a conversation with Chief Moore uh referencing getting some of the uh. Countywide automatic aid training back going. Uh that's something that has been happening on a regular basis since then. Uh at that time, he advised that he was uh in support of getting automatic aid uh back up and running. Uh but there's been no progress.
I sure would like to see that uh.
Absolutely.
We're all set, that was.
Correct, yeah, absolutely.
Other questions from council? Okay, seeing none then, um could I have a roll call vote on. Moving forward with Monroe Fire Protection District's special fire general fund budget request?
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Sorry. Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hogg?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McCam?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Sorry.
Yes. This is for the special fire?
Did you hear me say yes?
No, thank you.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you.
Council, I move to open for discussion and review. Fund eight six nine one special fire cumulative fire. With category requests in the capital category of one million one hundred and seventy eight thousand seven hundred and sixty six dollars in a total of the same.
Second.
Okay, accumulative funds fairly straightforward. Uh we've got three lines, uh station twenty one, uh rescue twenty two, and engine twenty two. Uh each of those three lines are the actual payment costs due uh for the financing on the loans for those apparatus or station. Uh small vehicles will be replacing uh again on our replacement schedule. Two of our small vehicles, uh squads, brush trucks, supports, utilities are the types of vehicles for that line. Uh miscellaneous category, uh that's what we utilize for fire hose, uh any emergency lighting, sirens, radios for apparatus. Any hand tools or specialized equipment. Uh personal protective equipment, the vast bulk of that line is always the twenty sets of uh fire gear that we replace. Um per NFPA, that gear is worth, are good for ten years. Uh we've got approximately two hundred sets of gear, so we have that on a recurring replacement schedule. Uh building renovations, uh we have several stations uh where the parking lots are in need of uh. Um some resealing and uh one roof that is needed uh in need of repair. Apparatus replacement line. Uh that line will be to replace Marine twenty one. Uh that is the sole watercraft for search and rescue and fire suppression for Lake Monroe. Um if you get online and you look at some of the marina fires and whatnot that have occurred in the last couple of years. Uh the boat that we have now was purchased twenty years ago. And it is not adequate for the size of marina that currently exists um on Lake Monroe. So we've also incurred quite a bit of maintenance issues with that over the last five years, and it is time for an upgrade. And then uh station twenty six. So previously, uh Washington Township had contributed three hundred thousand dollars to the donation line. At the fire district specifically earmarked for use uh for a fire station, Washington Township. They also deeded the property that they own um on Chambers Pike for the fire station. Um so the fire district is in possession of that. Uh they passed over all of the site plans, the site work and the building plans. Uh and the work that was done. Now, there were some updates that needed to be done, so we have been working with. Uh Doug Bruce and Bynum Fanuel to finalize that, send out to bid. The plan will be to complete that site work this year and bid the building and construct the building in two thousand and twenty four. The one hundred and fifty thousand dollars and what will be left from site work from the three hundred thousand. Uh is likely not to going to cover the entire cost of construction. So we'll probably do similar to what we did with station twenty one, where we'll get a short-term loan. Um and that would likely result in a hundred and fifty thousand dollar line in twenty twenty five. And maybe a small portion in twenty twenty six, but I don't see any need further than twenty twenty six for station twenty six.
That's a twenty six. Okay, um are there questions about this fund?
Just that I'll be very excited to finally see that station in Washington Township. I mean, I know that's been.
Me too.
In discussion, are in for a long time.
Yeah. Counselor Deckard?
I I wanted to add to that what Counselor McCam is saying. I know this number, we made an effort in the PSLA committee to try to get. Cooperation between all those entities, including Elsville, Bloomington. Uh our friends in Steinsville and of course here in the county to get that done, and we were unable to do it. And I was really disappointed that we could not come together to make that happen. Because when I listened to what you were saying on the last funds and this. I think that you've been on this message for a long time, and I think it's worthy of some praise. You've talked and your board has talked and you are well represented here about how there are needs in this county. Uh that match needs anywhere else, and people need someone there from your department. And I hear all the time about how much this department's doing. We go out to community events, whether you're in Smithville, Maritzburg. Whatever the event is, you all are there. When we have a uh. Uh an unfortunate loss such as when we lost Devin Driver, your department was right there doing all those things. And I think that that those things add up. And it doesn't take very long to go across the border and be in your territory or this territory or that. You name it, and I, that's commendable what's happening because those needs in the county will not change. In fact, they're all, yeah, I get that you get, they're only gonna grow. So we had a chance to do that this summer, and I think there's some folks in government and public service that really dropped the ball on that. Now I'm hopeful we can get that going, but that need is not in the way. So I'm just grateful for all this and that you're thinking about that. Because those of us that have watched this community a long time, like the folks on this council, we know that need is real. Whether it's down where Cheryl's at or down by the lake, it's gonna be going on all the time. So thanks, chief, for coming in here and worrying as well.
Other comments or questions on this fund? Alright, um could we have a roll call vote, please, on the Monroe Fire Protection District's twenty. Twenty four special fire cumulative fire budget request?
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hogg?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McCam?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous?
Thank you. I really appreciate all that you're doing and appreciate you being here.
We'll see you next month. Thank you.
Alright, that brings us to item number six with our county fair.
Council, I move to open for discussion and review. Fund one thousand zero eight zero six general county fair. With category requests uh in the. with category requests, uh, in the services category, a hundred thirteen thousand, seven hundred fifty-five dollars in a total of the same.
Second.
Okay. Do we have anyone from that group here?
Could talk about good things at the county fair, but I expect they have more detail.
So I'm just checking.
Don't know.
I need to see if there's anything. I don't see anything. Um, can, Auditor Smith?
Uh, thank you. Uh, this, I wanted to point out to you, I know I've done it once before, but I want to tell you again. In the fair book, um, on the description on how the fair is paid for, it talks about how they used to have a tax rate that's been taken away from them. It does not say that, that the county, uh, provides funding from them from tax revenue. And that, as auditor, that kind of really rubs me the wrong way. You know, I'm very supportive of four H and I participate in the county fair. But I would really, um, like them to put in the fair book, um, in the page where they talk about that. You know, that, that the, the county residents, um, have a, you know, maximum levy that they pay for taxes and part of that is given to the county fair. Because I want every citizen in Monroe County to know they contribute to that fair when the county council sets that budget. I think that's pretty important.
Thank you, yeah.
Counsel, I move, we continue this budget.
Second.
Uh, Counsel Munson?
I just want to thank, uh, uh, Auditor Smith for an excellent suggestion. And I am happy to, uh, uh, work with, uh, the Fair Board Officers, uh, about, uh, providing information to fairgoers. I, I think they deserve to know it and it, it's a great idea.
Thank you. Um.
Excuse me, was the motion to table continued?
Continue.
Continuing.
Continue.
To the, yeah, to the, I guess at this point it's the work session, right?
Right. Um, right. Yes, I, I know that the public and many of us, uh, just think of the fair as being for four H, the fair board and the, and that's as much as we love going there to participate in what four H does. That is not a part of this budget at all. So we need to make sure because we don't want the public to think four H was negligent not showing up for their budget because this is not their budget.
Four H air force budget. That's correct. Yeah, we already did the extension and four H programming side of things. Um, any other questions on continuing this item? All right, could we have a roll call vote on continuing the Monroe County Fair's general fund budget request?
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you. Our next item is the budget for our own council office.
Counsel, I moved open for discussion and review fund one thousand zero zero six-one general council office with category requests of in personnel, four hundred thirty-two thousand, one hundred and four dollars. In supplies, one thousand three hundred dollars. In services category, two hundred seventy-four thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars. For a total of seven hundred seven thousand, five hundred nineteen dollars.
Second.
Thank you. Um, and our council administrator, uh, and I discussed this and she will do a run-through and I'm available for questions on our budget.
Um, in the personnel portion, um, I want to point out that the council administrator uh, position is, uh, going up to the eight-year step, so there's an increase there. We added the assistant council administrator position, um, that did come in at a PAT-A and that is the amount there. Um, so that you'll see an increase in that. And then there's the, um, the longevity with regards to those positions, we removed the part-time hourly amounts uh, to, to, uh, compensate for the assistant position. And, uh, so then there's the increase in the, um, insurance, the FICA and the perf because of that. With the, um, supplies, uh, there's a slight increase with regards to, uh, printing copy paper, you know, that kind of thing. Um, uh, the dues amount stayed the same. I did do an increase with regards to the, uh, contractual with regard, because of WIS. We have seen an, um, increase in their hourly rate, so I, um, increased that by ten thousand dollars. Um, we get a, a slight increase of a thousand dollars in travel training with regards to the new personnel. Uh, there was, um, a request to do an eight percent increase with regards to the community services rather than going with the four percent, um, maximum levy growth quotient. So there's that increase of a, to a hundred and seventy-three thousand. And we did a increase with the BEDC, uh, due to the membership, uh, for two thousand and twenty-three did increase. So, and that's all the increases with regards and changes with regards to the council budget.
Thank you for the review. Are there questions or comments on our budget? Counsel McKim?
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess I'm probably gonna make a motion, but, uh, I just want to see what everybody else thinks. I do think that, uh, in community services, we've been asking every other department to try to trim what they can, um, uh, in, in, in the interest of prioritizing raises for county employees. I, I think our practice of increasing the community service by the, uh, maximum levy growth quotient is a good one. Um, and I, you know, I, I, so I definitely would support, uh, increasing it by that four percent. But, um, I really think that that's an area where we could trim a little bit, just like other departments have been voluntarily doing. Uh, just to kind of show that we're, you know, we're serious and we've got skin in the game with respect to the, uh, employee raises as well.
Are there other comments or questions? Sorry, Counsel Iverson?
Uh, yeah, my understanding is that the Assistant Council Administrator position has been posted and interviews are going on, is that correct?
Yes, we have interviews scheduled for tomorrow.
Oh, so we'll know pretty soon.
Things move fast in county government.
Oh.
Public sector, that's wonderful.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, that's, that's good to know. I, I'm a big supporter of that position, so I'm, I'm glad that that's gonna be filled pretty quickly.
Counsel Crossley?
Thank you. Um, I understand the idea of, um, we can't really ask other people to trim if we're not trimming. Um, my concern with that is the fact that some of us that are on the Sophia Travis Grant Committee just really heard the nature of the, um, funding for people who needed the items, um, and the funding and services for a lot of different things. So I guess that would be okay with us if we don't do the eight, go to the four. But I think personally, I would feel comfortable with taking, maybe kind of going back and circling back around that after all is said and done with the budget to see if there would be, if we're, can't do the eight and if we can do a little bit more than the four, that would be my, my comfort, comfort level with that. Cause I, I get it, um, but I know that the needs of the community aren't gonna go down, they're gonna continue to increase with everything else. So I, I would be fine with that, but again, my comfort level would be us trying to come back and circle back just kind of like how we're doing everything else and seeing, um, if there is a possibility, if we can do a little bit more than the four and maybe less than the eight.
Okay, um, Counselor Deckard and then Counselor Munson?
I, I appreciate what Counselor McKim is saying, um, and Counselor Crossley on finding, uh, an effort where this council puts our, our money literally where our mouths are with every other department. And I would say if we're doing an eight percent this, in this initial request and Counselor McKim is talking about, uh, the four percent, I'd be happy to, to get things done. I'd be happy to meet somewhere between there, much like what Counselor Crossley's saying, but I see the need for that. Um, I also, as I think about what the county has done, a few years ago, we had, there were a lot of discussions about, you know, why, why is government just generally, why are public servants not doing things that are alternatives to what they normally do? Such as in the justice system, we heard a lot, or funds should be going elsewhere. And what I'll say is frankly, for the county and in the city too, and the townships, I throw them in there. We've been doing these alternative things for a number of years before it was cool. And that's okay and that's a good thing. And, um, at the same time as we do those things though, I think we do have to recognize our folks who are working in our system and that we gotta take care of. Uh, we have a, a large car industry that here in a few hours may go to strike because workers are saying, hey, look, we need a little bit more coming out from underneath that hood to go into our pocketbooks. And I think we have heard a very similar message. And so I'm happy to keep, for us to keep working on this on a number uh, that shows that this council is in it, uh, with the, the rest of the, the good folks that we've asked the very same things from.
Thank you. Counsel Munson?
Thank you. Every year on the Sophia Travis Grants Committee, when we review the applications, we get to hear the recommendations from the, from the organizations that deal with uh, some of the most crucial problems in our county and community. And for many years now, uh, the key problem has been food, 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 food and food. We have, uh, with a very small, um, amount of taxpayer dollars helps the organizations that really put together all kinds of other resources to, to double, triple, quadruple and many times over the actual amount of funding. But then again, we look at the amount of money that we have and we could use twice as much, not just eight percent more, we could use twice as much to meet the needs that we see, uh, year after year. And so, uh, I certainly do support the idea of coming back and reconsidering again what we would all feel comfortable with. Once we meet the needs of our departments which have to be first priority for the council. And, uh, I think it's worth giving, uh, our community services, uh, a second look. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Counselor McKim?
Thank you, and I certainly do appreciate all the work that the, uh, Sophia Travis Grants Committee has done on, uh, uh, in, in evaluating all the, all the needs. And I, I certainly don't disagree that the needs are far greater than the, uh, available funding. I will say that we've also had the opportunity through, uh, ARPA to address some of the similar needs, not, certainly not all. You know, that, that there have been, uh, for example, in the area of foods, uh, food, I know that there have been, uh, some ARPA commitments, uh, given there as well. Uh, and I also do support, uh, circling back around, you know, one, one alternative is always to look at what are the reversions at the end of the year or what are likely to be the reversions and to do some kind of additional appropriation. So, yeah, I certainly think there are, are options for increasing it beyond, um, you know, beyond what it is now. So I'm just, uh, I'm gonna move in the interest of showing solidarity with, uh, other departments who have made cuts to, uh, support employee salaries. Uh, I move we set, uh, line three zero zero three one, community service to a hundred and sixty-seven thousand.
Second. Okay, and so, um, just to be clear then, that is putting it back at the four percent um, as opposed to the eight percent. Is, are there any questions or comments on the motion to reduce? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counsel Munson?
I will vote yes, in the sense that we are going to come back and, and, and reconsider. So my vote is yes on this.
Counsel Wiltz?
Yes.
Counsel Hawk?
Yes.
Counsel Iverson?
Yes.
Counsel Crossley?
Yes.
Counsel Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Um, and I do think even so, I mean, if things look different perhaps in, um, March or so. I mean, there could be an, an additional appropriation just as other departments request those. So we'll circle back, um, at the end of this budget process and we will, you know, have another opportunity to think about this. But I, I agree that, um, this is a more prudent approach given the balance of needs across county government. Are there other comments or?
Yes, considering that the legislation has changed and that the, um, we can use the elected officials' training, uh, the, the budget that we spoke of just yesterday uh, to cover some of the county councils, uh, training. I, I believe we could take that thousand dollars back out of that, the growth because that's a lot of growth in that budget for one person. You know, when the whole budget was two thousand five hundred for everybody. Just thinking.
All right, I, I agree with that. So Michelle, would that, wouldn't that be your understanding that this line would really only need to be for, um, for staff? Because counselors can now travel on the elected officials tra- training fund?
Is, I, is that the way that, that works? Okay, yeah, sure, that works.
Okay, so.
Okay.
Yes, so since that's, we have that new funding stream, we can, we can take that, okay.
Okay.
So Counsel, uh, Counsel, I move we reduce line three zero zero to a training travel from thirty-five hundred dollars to twenty-five hundred dollars.
Second. Thanks. Any discussion on that reduction? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Sorry, who seconded?
Me.
Thank you. Uh, Counsel Iverson?
Yes.
Counsel McKim?
Yes.
Counsel Hawk?
Yes.
Counsel Munson?
Yes.
Counsel Wiltz?
Yes.
Counsel Deckard?
Yes.
Counsel Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you. Any other thoughts on our council office budget? Okay, uh, in that case, when you're ready, could we have a roll call vote?
Counsel Crossley?
Yes.
Counsel Deckard?
Yes.
Counsel Hawk?
No.
Counsel Iverson?
Yes.
Counsel McKim?
Yes.
Counsel Munson?
Yes.
Counsel Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passed six-one.
Thank you. So at this point in our meeting, um, we are going to take a short recess, um, of I think we will do fifteen minutes approximately. Let's try to be back here at six forty. Thank you. There we go. Thank you. Um, we are ready to resume our budget reviews. So we are, are at number eight on the agenda.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review, Fund one one two seven zero 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 zero, Convention Visitor Tourism with category requests of in services, two million five hundred twenty two thousand dollars. Pardon me, let me restate this, two million five hundred twenty two thousand seven hundred seventy seven dollars for a total of two million five hundred twenty two thousand seven hundred seventy seven dollars.
Second.
Hi and welcome. It's good to see you. Thank you for your patience. We were hungry.
It's good to be here. And to kick off, I'd just like to say this time last year, uh, the, uh, the tourism industry was in a different place. We were in a different place as a community and, uh, with no capital improvement board uh, and an uncertain future, uh, is a expanded convention center and a vehicle for economic impact. And we're in a much different place today. And so before we start, I just want to thank this body, uh, the, the county commissioners, uh, the, the city council, and also the mayor's office for coming together and getting that done. So, um, before we jump into it, I just wanted to, to put that on record and say thanks.
A pleasure.
Uh, before we get into the budget, I just want to tell you a little bit about how we came to that and the state of tourism in Monroe County and the growth of that, um, economic vehicle is evident by the growth in the innkeeper's tax. Uh, in twenty nineteen, we had a record year of two point eight million. Uh, of course, then we went into the pandemic and in here, two years removed, we're almost a million dollars ahead of where that record year was in twenty nineteen. So it has recovered, uh, it is robust. Uh, and we're ready for a right sized facility for, for this community. Um, this budget is based on that growth and sets us up well. It's a conservative budget, considering the growth that we've experienced. But I think it gives us an opportunity to invest in other tourism projects as well as an expanded convention center, uh, and, uh, projects that'll add vibrancy to both Bloomington and Monroe County. So, uh, but happy to go through the, the budget and, and talk through some of those changes. Uh, we did, uh, if you'll see, uh, we've done a ten percent growth, uh, to both the, um, uh, Visit Bloomington for, um, visits visitor center services and a ten percent growth uh, to our convention center management company. I did want to point out that all of the funds that are, are used and expended here uh, are coming from the innkeeper's tax, not from any county funds.
Thank you. Um, are there questions or comments on this budget? Go right ahead.
This is a question, uh, sorry, this is a question for, uh, for Visit Bloomington. Just, um, have there been any changes in your staffing level over the last year? Is this budget adding any positions or is it staying the same?
Mike McAfee. Hi, I'm Mike McAfee, Executive Director of Visit Bloomington. No, no changes on our staffing at all. It's been the same level for many years.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes, I'm, I'm interested simply because this is like the talk of the entire county government. Uh, and that is whether or not we could provide a cost of living raise. And so could you tell me what your cost of living raise was considered at?
What my cost of living raise is for twenty twenty four? Yeah, well, I can tell you that we are seeing, um, it's about a one hundred eighty thousand dollar increase to our budget. And all of the, all of that increase is going towards market. And all of the, all of that increase is going towards marketing, event development, and cost of living personnel benefit.
Well, that's what I think what she's asking. What percentage raise are you?
Right around 5% is what, I mean, we haven't done that yet. We won't do that until December. It'll depend on what, what we get approved and and where we're at with that. But, but I have budgeted up to 5% raises at this point. But I always look at what the county's doing, what the city's doing, what the university's doing, and put that number in. That, that's what the CDC has approved in the budget to date to you and my board has as well. But it'll really depend on how the year ends and where we're at. It'll be up to that amount.
Other questions? Counselor Iverson.
Yeah, so we just heard what additional 10% is going to be done with visitor center, increased marketing, making sure that wages are going up and some really good things. What about the convention center service line that's going up by $36,000? Tell us what great things are going to happen there.
Well, I think we are focused on still taking care of that building. You know, a lot of our increases over the last few years have definitely gone to repair and maintenance. It's 32 years since it's been open now. We are back up to, um, almost close to levels of 2019. So, uh, it's very active, uh, at the building right now. And so with that activity comes increased repairs and maintenance. And so our personnel discussion is similar to what, you know, Mike shared with visitors here. But, um, you know, it's costs of health insurance goes up as well.
Sure.
So those are primarily.
Yeah, maintaining of.
You know, our marketing, uh, this Wilmington, there's a lot of the marketing for, uh, the convention center. So we work with them closely as well.
Sure. No, that sounds great. Uh, you know, I, I've certainly noticed an uptick in the number of, uh, times I've been going to the convention center for different activities. And I think this is money well spent to make sure that, uh, we're going into a good facility.
Yeah, we appreciate that. It's still very important to keep up the reputation. We still have groups from around the state, Midwest that are coming and you know, just that level of service and quality, uh, for our current, uh, events that are happening is still very important.
Sure.
And group size is growing. And that's definitely what we're noticing. Um, so people are feeling more comfortable getting out and, you know, are, are having events that, um, that, you know, they either postponed for a while and now they're having them again. And so they're starting to see their attendance grow.
So in addition to attendance size or group size, are we also seeing a number of bookings increase as well? Or?
And revenue, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, great. Thanks.
It's closer to 2019 at this point. So
That's really good news.
We should be right at where 2019 was, which was a record year.
That's great.
Counselor Munson.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I can't be with the council in person tonight to, uh, hear your, um, good report in person. It's very optimistic. And I'm excited to hear about the additional revenue coming in. But I would like, uh, you all to share with the, the public what they're going to, to expect to see in terms of changes at the convention center using both, uh, the additional funding, uh, talked about tonight and also the ARPA funding that has been discussed as, as, uh, our deliberations have gone on late summer and this early fall. Could you tell us that, please?
Yes, uh, the ARPA funding, I can give you an update on that. Uh, we've done estimates on some costs and of course they've come in higher than, uh, we had anticipated, but right now we worked with the county, Richard Kreider with the maintenance department and, uh, looked at our HVA system and the chiller that's there. Uh, and also our freight elevator. Both of those things are a little past the end of their life. And if they go out, we're in big trouble and it can be nine months to get one in. So, they're big ticket items. So I think that right now that's what we're focused on. If there's money left over from that, we really do need to do some room upgrades as well as, uh, some of the AV upgrades. So at this point, we're looking at, uh, what, how those costs are going to come in. So, and with this budget, you know, it's just main maintenance and repair is basically what we're focused on. And, um, just, you know, people are going to have their most important event of the year there. They want to make sure that it looks good. It feels good. And, and we've got a fabulous staff at the convention center that, you know, we've really all been through a lot over the last five or six years. And I think it's really brought everybody closer and they're, uh, very, uh, professional educated with the events, good at communicating with the group contacts. So really super proud of them, uh, as well as our catering and AV departments and our, our other suppliers. There's a whole set of 30 different contractors around town that help keep that building going from, you know, electric to decorators, uh, to, um, like event suppliers. So it's, um, yeah, it's been a good team and, you know, working with everybody makes it fun. That's, and this business is a fun business. So we want to get to more of that.
Absolutely. Uh, com- Counselor Deckard?
I was just gonna add, you do have a fabulous team. I, I got a recent opportunity, as you know, to watch up close as your team responded to not only in a bit, but things that happened during events.
Right.
And they are awesome. Uh, really like fast team and in my youth, when I was in that industry, I, I don't know if I could ever run with all your good folks, including yourself. And the one thing that does stand out as far as our, our convention center needs is that you are managing an incredibly challenging building in that it's got some age. That age goes in certain ways and the way it's constructed, if that freight elevator would go out or the other elevator, right? That's massive, a massive problem.
Yeah.
Particularly for the clientele that are going to come in. So as we all keep moving towards this good progress with the CIB, which is awesome and the convention center, you kind of have to keep that in mind on that, the age of that facility and that just stacks up after a while. Even the best of teams is they can only do so much.
Yeah. And I will share this, it's its 100th anniversary. So we really need to be like pretty excited about it, like what it's achieved over the last 30 years. I mean, there's 500 events. There's, uh, it's a good sturdy, stable building. It was good vision and execution and has been a popular, you know, for lots of memories throughout the whole community.
Other questions or comments?
Well, if we're going to talk about memories, my, my memory of that building is when I worked for Tom O'Daniel Ford in the accounting department. And then the day that we walked in there and it was Bill Cook and Steve Ferguson and my friend Bill Finch and we all went in there and, and they told us what the dream was going to be. And, and you folks all made it come true. And the community worked with you. And so, um, I look forward to seeing what the next stage will be.
Yeah, yeah. And it's time, you know, it's, yeah.
Any other comments or questions? All right. In that case, could we have a roll call vote on moving forward with the convention centers, um, visitor tourism fund budget request?
Counselor McCam?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Wilt?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Counsel, I moved to open for discussion and review Fund 40050000. Convention Center Operating with category requests of in the services category, $594,000 for a total of the same.
Second.
And, uh, this is a budget that is, uh, generated by the room revenue, uh, at the convention center. Uh, it's deposited to Monroe County. We get it back out through our management contract and a few other expenses. Some of those we've like put over to the other funds that we were talking about in the budget before. But, um, so that's, that's what this budget is.
Questions or comments on this one? All right. Could we have a roll call vote on moving forward with the convention centers operating budget request?
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Wilt?
Yes.
Counselor McCam?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you.
Counsel, I moved up for discussion review 146020000. Conventions in our debt with category requests of in services, $636,000 for a total of the same.
Second.
Yes.
So this fund, uh, covers the, uh, the existing debt on the convention center. Uh, our renovation and then the purchase of contiguous land to the existing convention center. And I've been paying on this for several years. We have just a few years left to go. Uh, and this would be our annual payments for the upcoming year. Current balance on that loan, uh, principal balance is about 1.8 or a little over 1.8 million. When we get to April of next year. So it's sitting at around 2 million right now.
There are questions on the debt service fund? Nope. Um, you said it's getting close to being finished. And I believe I remember that we've entered a period where there's no penalty for
So we're in that period. So we could pre, uh, we could, um, pay off the loan at any point with no penalty. And so in the debt, if we paid it based on schedule, it would retire in April of 2026. So just about three years away.
But we are, my understanding is at this point, we're primarily paying principal anyway, right? So it's not a huge, there's no penalty for early pre, but early payment, but there's really no managed.
But we've paid, we've paid most of the interest already.
Yes, that makes sense. Other questions or comments? Yes, Counselor Hawk.
I know I should know this, but since I don't ask the question, the revenue coming in from the other, uh, that we owe the loan for, uh, at least in part, uh, for the rental on those properties. Does that go into this portion of the fund to help keep that?
You're absolutely right, Marty. I neglected to mention that. So we do have a few properties on the land that we purchased that do go, uh, against the, or do go into this fund as well to, to fund the, the, uh, the loan. So thanks for reminding me. I didn't, I did forget to mention that.
I thought I remembered it being like that, but it wasn't.
Significant. It's about a hundred and $10,000 a year.
Right.
Not, not a lot, but still.
Mm-hmm.
It's.
Sounds like a lot to me.
We sort of like my sister's closet being there. Could we just work around them?
Other comments or questions? All right. Uh, could I have a roll call vote, please, on moving forward with the convention centers debt fund budget request?
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McCam?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Wilt?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Counsel, I moved to open for discussion review Fund 49090000. Convention visitor capital improvement with category requests of in services, $100,000 and a total of $100,000 altogether.
Second.
So this fund comes from the innkeeper's tax, uh, which funds upkeep for the convention center, uh, in its current form. We do set aside money every year, um, for, uh, upgrades and, and, um, mechanical failures and other capital improvements that go on in the building. So this year we've expended $67,000 already, uh, and, um, we have, uh, a hundred thousand or we anticipate keeping it at the same level, uh, of contribution. Our total fund there is about, uh, 200,000 right now.
Okay. Other questions on this fund? Okay, seeing none. Could we have a roll call vote on moving forward with the capital improvement budget request?
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Wilt?
Yes.
Counselor McCam?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you. I have a question on that though.
Okay.
I mean, just clarification, uh, those dollars are also available for the, uh, visitor center as well.
Correct. Absolutely. And so, uh, and as a matter of fact, this year we expended funds for, uh, the repaving of, uh, the parking lot for the visitor center. So we're still certainly maintaining that property as well as, as just the convention center.
I remember years ago, we didn't have that fund and I said, we really need to do that because these buildings will need repair. And I'm glad we did because there's been times you really needed it.
Mm-hmm. Appreciate the work you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are now at item number nine on the agenda.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review Fund 12220000. Emergency 911 with category requests of in the services category, $867,000 for a total of $867,000.
Second.
If I may, um, before this budget presentation, I did want to advise the council of an anticip- I guess it's an anticipatory comment. When dispatch's budget was presented to the city council, there was, um, a request to increase the budget to include a nurse within central dispatch. That request was brought to the policy board and voted down. Typically in our interlocal, the policy board, the dispatch policy board makes recommendations to the council. In speaking with the city counterparts, it is believed that if one council adopts a higher budget and the other, a second council adopts a lower budget, the lower budget would prevail. Um, it is my understanding that the city council adopted a higher budget, but on a contingency, and I don't know what that contingency is. And so I was, I reached out to the city council attorney, Mr. Lucas, to gather further information.
Well, alrighty then. Thank you. Yeah.
Our adoption is considered the final vote, not anything we do today, right?
Yes, this is not the final adoption of the dispatch budget.
Um, are there, are there questions for our attorney before we get started? Yes.
I would just like to say that if we have a lot of questions on this, we could just all say pass and not make any definitive yes or no on it, which is what I would probably do.
Counselor McCam?
So the, but the, um, version of the budgets that we have in front of us are the versions that have been approved by the policy book, the policy board.
Correct.
Thank you.
Oh, it is?
Yes, what we have here is what was approved by the policy.
And the policy board is made up of our sheriff's department and and city and there's, and whoever's in charge of central dispatch. Is that the three?
Test.
There are five members, uh, the city police, sheriff, IUPD.
Oh, I forgot.
City fire and, uh, county fire.
All right. Okay, so now I will say welcome Chief Decamp and Taylor. Um, good to see you. And we have your budgets. So are there things you want to tell us about?
Yeah, so we use, okay, I'm Sarah Taylor. I've not met most of you. So hello, I'm the Director of Civilian Operations. One of my primary duties is to oversee the Monroe County Central Emergency Dispatch Center. We use the E911 fund for our communications contract and for instruction. So the first thing I'd like to cover with you is our communications contract. There is an increase. We had a 10-year agreement with our computer-aided dispatch and records management system that is Motorola Spillman. That expires mid-year next year in 2024. Motorola has given us an option to um renew with them for five years. And their first year, of course, is going to be the highest, the um majority of the lump sum. So that year one's cost is three hundred and thirty-eight thousand with years two and five, anywhere between a hundred and thirty-five thousand. To a hundred and fifty thousand. So that's the big increase that we're seeing in our communications contract. The rest of it is. Uh around the same as it was for twenty twenty-three. And the instruction portion of our E nine one one fund, as we move into a hopefully post-pandemic world. A lot of our communications partners are opening backup conferences and training. Our training coordinator is very good about finding opportunities for dispatchers. And our dispatchers are education hun- hungry. They strive for excellence and really pick up on those opportunities. So we are asking that that amount stays the same so that they have as many opportunities as they have had in years prior.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions from counsel? Counselor Iverson.
Again, thank you for being here. Uh um one of the things that we keep hearing is uh about vacancies and the trouble with. You know, making sure the staff is is retained and talent retained. Um can you tell us a little bit about uh what the staffing situation is uh in dispatch?
We have ten dispatch vacancies right now. Uh as we increase our total F T E allotment. That vacancy rate of about nine or ten is staying the same, so we are seeing more personnel in the center. We're just, for the last three years, have increased our staffing, so it looks like it's the same. Um but percentage-wise, we are getting a little better. A shortage of dispatchers is not a Monroe County problem. It's not a city of Leamington problem. It is a nationwide problem and has been since prior to the pandemic. The pandemic just made it worse. We have a lot of interested uh candidates and unfortunately. Year after year, we're finding that they are being offered more money to stay at their current job or getting a gig working from home. Um so we see a lot of good quality applicants not choose to start a new career in dispatch.
We've heard that too.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Counselor McCam.
Yeah, and I know the the question of reserves is a complicated one because there's kind of a city. Reserves pool and then there's a county reserves pool that we that we haven't distributed. Do you, do you have a sense of uh and I know that that the the money is not that that's not spent uh by the end of the year and the budget. Goes to reserves that then can be used for capital equipment. Do you have a sense of how, what the size of that is and is it adequate for to fund your? Your capital replacement needs?
I'll defer to Chief Decoff. I have not heard anything about.
Actually, I do not. That is, that is something that um the city controller's office really keeps track of. Um and I own, I know there's lots of communication with uh the county on those funds, but I don't have uh an exact number of what those are.
Okay, I'll, I'll talk to Mr. Cockrell.
Other questions? Yes.
Um yes, I don't have the interlocal agreement in front of me. Are you prepared to speak to that this evening? Speaking to our county attorney.
I have the interlocal in front of me.
Um. The reason I ask that question is uh when this was first put together ages ago, that interlocal. Um. There was discussion about what would happen with reserves and what could actually happen if, if they have. So many uh openings that they haven't filled, but we budget it, well then that sets in their reserves. If we budget what we believe is the actual need and to the point that they are going to be able to fill those slots, then that sets in. And I hate to say this without having the interlocal agreement in front of me, but I believe what it says is that that stays in a fund. That the auditor sets up and um that would stay in the reserve. Now, what is important about this is if there's ever a shortfall, um then what happens? Is fifty percent of that, the city pays and fifty percent of that, the county pays. Now, I'm stating this from an interlocal agreement that I saw years ago. If there's a newer one since that time, I'd be happy to see it. And if I'm remembering this incorrectly, I'm happy to be reminded why I'm wrong.
Stay tight for a second.
So in looking at the interlocal and. So it states that. Sorry, can I have a second? When I made it bigger, I lost my spot. While I look for this, I do believe Counselor Munson has her hand up.
Who's managing this meeting? Counselor Munson, please go ahead.
Yes. Hello, Chief Decoff. And other boards staff. I'm um. I served as the uh council liaison to the dispatch policy board for a number of years. And this helped us as a council have information about. Uh the balance in the reserves. And every year, it was a challenge to get this because we had to put both the, the city. Controller's office and the, and the auditor together. Now, our auditor is on top of everything as I understand it. And I think we should all benefit from looking at what the reserves are and understanding. Uh both the amount, uh which is what I'm asking for and um. And our mutual agreement, which is what Counselor Hawk has uh had her question concerning. So I'm appealing to my fellow counselors for us to um. Give Chief Decoff uh time for, to get this information put together uh. With the controller's office and I know our auditor's office will, will be ready to work on this too. So we can hear this when we uh consider the several budget uh items that are still. Uh going to come back before us. That's my request. Thank you.
Thank you, um Counselor uh McCam.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that I know that Jeff Cockrell and um Angie Purdy are both. Kind of up on this and they've had frequent communications with the controller and the auditor about this. So I would, I would start with them before, you know, chasing down any. Any other information. They're, they're gonna be pretty current.
So I think the um paragraph displayed on the screen that says uh starts with two addresses of Counselor Hawk's question. So to the extent dispatch funds exceed the budget, it should be held by the county in either the Monroe County nine one one fund or the Public Safety Answering Point. Point Local Income Fund. Um any excess dispatch funds consisting. Reserve funds shall be held and expended only for capital cost emergencies or other expenditures that are mutually agreed upon by the parties.
And, and that's what I was referring to. There's both the county side and the city side. The city side, what's already been sent over and reverts at the end of the year and. Then, yeah, is available for ca- essentially for capital expenditures. Is that, that what you were referring to?
Right, and, and also uh they wouldn't have quite sufficient reserve if we didn't uh approve a budget. That was more than we know that they're going to be able to fill. Because we've heard how many times they can only fill so many slots that are open because of training. You don't want to try to put that many new people on board and, and try to get them trained and effective. And I'm saying that only because that's what Chief Decoff told me years ago, so I'm assuming he hasn't changed his mind. So I'm just saying, there are reasons why we might have questions about this budget and so. Like for instance, I don't know how many uh vacancies you have right now. How many open slots?
There are ten dispatch slots open and we can fill six at a time, three to four times a year. So for those ten, we have potential and I choose to be optimistic about this, that mid-year we can be fully staffed.
And as a reminder, what we can always do, if they fill like three slots, they need three more slots. There's something called an additional appropriation. We know how that works. We do that all the time. And that way we know we're working together as a team and as you are able to fill those slots and you have more slots open. Then we can discuss it again. And that's, uh that's really, uh and then that reserve money. We have a better idea of where it is and it's sitting there in the nine one one and we, because we've had a lot of trouble trying to get. Uh the information we've asked for in the past. I'm not faulting you for this. I truly am not. I'm just saying. This is what the history tells us.
Are these positions budgeted in this fund? Um as opposed to the next one, I'm just.
No, they would be in the next one under the P S lit.
Okay.
I'm just talking to Angie.
Yeah, no, I, that's, that's fine. I just wanted to clarify. Um are there other comments or questions? Um. Okay. This particular, are there questions then? I'm wondering if we. We could move forward on this budget. And w- wait on the next one, or are they so inextricably linked that we would want to?
What are the questions that are outstanding that actually have to do with the budget?
What, that centers on the reserves, location of reserves and those funds, I believe.
Well, that's how it's funded. That's, that's not what the.
Yeah.
I mean, unless you want to actually cut positions, but we don't. I mean, we don't budget the county that way. We still budget as though all our, our positions are full. We don't wait, our sheriff's department, all, all their personnel.
Yeah, and the money that stays there always is Joe County money. It's not like split with a different unit. If, if you're comfortable with it, you should do whatever you're comfortable.
It's no, I was just trying to get to understand what the nature of your outstanding questions.
Yeah. Um all right, well, let's go ahead then. If there are no further questions. I see Cheryl Munson has her hand raised.
Right.
Go ahead, Cheryl.
I wanted to uh comment that the, the only thing related to uh my question was the equipment line. And that's only fifty thousand dollars. Um because the reserve funds are um. For what is needed but uh principally focused on equipment.
There's, and it's actually budget.
That, that line is zero.
That line is.
Yes, so it doesn't, it doesn't make any sense to uh.
Okay.
Do anything with this particular budget in that regard.
All right. In that case, I will go ahead and um ask for a roll call vote. On the emergency nine one one. Request.
Counselor McCam.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Hawk.
Pass.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Motion passed six zero one pass.
Thank you.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review fund four nine three three zero 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 zero. P S A P Lit Interlocal with category requests of in the services budget, two million five hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. For a total of the same.
Second.
So do you have any details to share about this budget before we ask questions?
Uh we covered a lot of it. I just want to reiterate that we are planning on having a hiring process either at the end of the year or the very beginning of next year. And then one a quarter after that to potentially be fully staffed by mid-year twenty twenty-four. Um and I also want to tout some of the dispatchers quickly. This year has been a year of establishing a standard of excellence. They've been working very hard to um. To go live with our emergency police protocols. Our law enforcement calls account for seventy-seven percent of our call volume. So this is a change that impacted three quarters of what they do and they've handled it with grace and professionalism and really done a great job. We're hoping that the community's not even seeing that difference because these protocols are put in place to serve our community to the best of our ability. Really excited to see that move forward. Um we also are seeking Kalia accreditation for twenty twenty-four. If anyone's not familiar with that, that's the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement. It's the gold standard for law enforcement and communication centers. Um so we've been revamping our SOPs, making sure that the way that we operate is the way that we say that we operate. And it's just another way to distinguish the Monroe County Central Emergency Dispatch Center um as top of the line. Our budget asks are largely unchanged. The only thing I do want to comment on is our capital outlay, which is thirty-five thousand dollars. We currently only have two radio consoles that are permanently encrypted. That encryption allows us to listen to covert ops channels. Those are channels that the public cannot listen into or interfere with. Our other seven consoles are encrypted. Through a patch. It's basically a workaround that's not sustainable, so that thirty-five thousand dollars would be to encrypt the remaining seven positions. And that's all I have.
Okay, questions or comments? Counselor McCam.
Sorry, this may be as much for our auditor's table as anybody or for the council office, but uh. Is it your understanding that the um P S A P uh. The P S A P rate was, was set at the same uh rate as last year?
Yes.
Okay.
But I.
Welcome to the county technology situation.
I do think the P S A P rate was recently adjusted to try to reduce the amount of reserves that was resulting.
Right, this last year we did that, exactly. I just wanted to make sure that was being retained. I guess that. That, that's my thought. That's what I confirmed.
Right.
Yeah, we, we did. We set the rate last year to generate significantly less revenues so that we can use up some of those.
Probably still brought in more than what was anticipated because all of the income tax was bringing in a great deal more than what. Had been uh projected.
Counselor Deckard.
I, I wanted. I wanted to follow up on one of the comments you made about the protocols and I, I know every time I hear a siren, I know there's one of your focuses is behind that effort. To get that siren to the right place. If I'm a person watching at home, a, a member of the public. How will I know that service excellence protocols, what kind of things might I notice differently? In my interaction in a really harried, awful time of, of my life, what would that be like for me?
The main thing that these protocols are doing is streamlining the way that we ask questions, so. Dispatchers are human beings and that leads to deviation. These protocols lead the dispatcher down a specific path. That the end game is sending the right units to the emergency that you're having and giving any pre-arrival instructions. So if there's a medical emergency and you need to know to apply pressure to the wound, those protocols are giving those kind of results. So if there's a medical emergency and you need to know to apply pressure to the wound, those protocols are giving those kind of results.
Thank you very much.
Was there a further comment from your table? Other questions or comments on this budget?
Wait.
Yes.
I thought it was great when he did have, was gonna say something.
You said no.
Uh I was just going to clarify that yes, the rate um was adjusted last year. And then there was an error on the DLGF level where that point two five percent, the allocation that goes between um. Yes, there, the DLGF error between. Yes, so it was corrected for um twenty twenty-three. However, we found when we've gotten the estimated twenty twenty-four numbers. They're not accurate and we're still waiting for that correction. So just so we're being completely transparent.
Okay, thank you. Wait, yeah, keep us up to date on that. Thank you.
Further questions?
Happened to my.
Counselor Munson.
Yes, I have a question. Uh what is showing on the screen doesn't seem to have anything to do with um. Uh equipment or uh personnel. It just says city interlocal. And that's it.
That is all we see as well.
So is there something else that we should be looking at? Because we've, we've talked about, we've talked about personnel. And I've, I've talked about um purchasing equipment with funds from the reserves. And I want to talk about the, the right budget, but it doesn't look to be this one.
Not from our.
Mm, my understanding is. We forward them this amount and then they disperse it within a budget that they, they uh set up. So this is all you're going to see from us is that amount. I have not received a detail of how any of that's broken down.
Okay.
Although I see that somebody has.
In the past, we have seen uh, we have seen a number of personnel uh and their salaries um. So. With the interest of knowing about the reserves. That are available in what's being spent uh for uh equipment purchases, et cetera, that could be paid for by reserves. I don't know really what budget we're looking at.
It's there.
Uh that, so, so there are actual legitimate questions to put off then?
Yeah. Um.
And I don't, I don't want to hold up anything. Our, our dispatch operations are, are essential and critical. Um, we're not going to be holding things up. We just want to have better communication and understanding.
But we could, we, we could continue this to the work session as well, right? We still have.
Yeah.
This is gonna be a doozy of a work session.
In, in the past, we talk about, we talked about them giving us a monthly expense report, just like we give you for each department. Um, I think that's really what you guys are interested in, right?
I don't know about monthly.
No, there, there is a detailed budget for dispatch center that I have because I was on. Lit committee and I'm looking at the packet from that PS Lit committee, but that, it sounds like that has not gone to everybody. And that would be very useful. It sounds like that would be useful information. So that counselors could ask questions about the specific expenditure.
Sarah, if you could forward that to me, I would appreciate that. And then I can share it with the entire council. I know Amy had done it in pa, in the past, so. Thank you.
Counselor Hawk.
Yes, I, for me, I remember looking at, you know, each line and knowing what, you could tell which ones were vacant. And so if, if, if they feel like they can accommodate three at a time or whatever. Then you put that in the budget and then once they've got that three and they're ready to go for another three, then we just add that in. And if they feel like that's more than they can handle, but at no time. Would I want to reduce the ability for central dispatch to serve the community? Bunny just sitting there and not really providing that service because they've got vacancies they cannot fill is not helping anyone. And certainly it doesn't help the communication of trying to get those dollars figured out.
Chief Decoff.
Can I comment on that? So um we've had these discussions over many years. How the city budgets one way and the county budgets another. Um the city does not um, they budget for every position that is in the department. And so what it's sounding like is that maybe the county's not wanting to do that and have us come back. I don't know what that does. From a legal standpoint, um since both bodies have to approve the budget. Um, so that is something I think that. Uh the city and the county departments might need to discuss to see how that's gonna play out. Cause I don't think, I don't think that's ever been done, even on the, when the county does it. Uh over, over the number of years that we've had this in our local.
And we do typically fund empty positions in anticipation of them being filled. We do. But um I think the concern here. Is about the reserve, if I'm interpreting it correctly.
Yeah.
Regardless, I'd like to see. That, how did you get that?
That's what I want to say. Well, that's just magical.
I apologize, you didn't have that. I, 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 we just.
Counselor Munson? Oh.
Yes, uh I, I would like to assure Chief Decoff that um. Year after year, uh we received uh from Amy and from the, the, the prior uh dispatch director. Um. A budget listing positions and uh, uh. Other services and charges, et cetera, and uh capital outlays. So it looked very similar to the kind of thing that was on the screen, but. It uh, it didn't just say salaries and wages. It was a, a breakdown by, by type of position. And we just got used to uh seeing these. So I'm hoping that we can uh go back to that and I believe from uh Counselor McKim's comments that. Uh this is what uh the PS Lit Committee uh received from dispatch when they had their meeting.
Counselor McKim.
So, okay.
They already exist.
Yeah, thi, this, this is exactly, I think, the, the detailed budget that. Uh everybody has been talking about. And then if you look at the very bottom, look at the bottom line, the grand total. Uh you'll see that that's uh four point six million dollars. The two budgets that we've been asked to appropriate are significantly less than that. The difference is in those reserves and essentially we're, we're telling them. To run this budget out of these two appropriations, which add up to, I think, three million four hundred fifty-two thousand. Um and so the difference between the four point six million dollar budget and the three hundred, uh three million four hundred fifty-two thousand dollar appropriation that we'd be sending over. Yeah, are the reserves that they would be consuming that are already there at the city side. Does anybody disagree with me on that interpretation?
That's certainly what it looks like. No, and that, that is exactly what it appears to be.
And if I understand you right, let's say if there's. Make up a number, five included in this budget that doing their best, they can't fill all those slots. That will just add to that bottom line.
It, it would add to the amount of reserves that next year.
You're right.
We, we.
Right, just like what, just like we do with any of our budgets. There's the reason why when you're splitting a budget with another taxing unit, that's why this is an important question. So, um.
Any question every year? What are, what is the balance in the reserve? We don't know that or until. Like I know it was asked. I just wondered, I didn't, I forgot what the answer was at this point.
Ask Jeff Cockrell and Angie Purdy.
Got it.
That's the answer.
Okay. Okay. Um and that's not a piece of information I have to know. Um. To feel comfortable about the budget, but seeing this is, is better. Um, are there questions, comments?
Counselor McKim, is that what you mean? Like there's that, the grand total and then minus the two items. That's, that amount right there, it would be. From the reserve.
Which we can't see because it's being blocked by the uh.
Okay, hold on.
There you go.
How's that?
Yeah, that looks about right. Three, four. Yeah, two, two, five, eight, five, eight, six, seven. Yes, that, that's exactly what I'm saying. Yeah, so we're essentially spending, they're, they're gonna be spending one point two million dollars down of reserves to be able to fund, you know, to be able to fund this budget.
So then, the number of positions. Personnel-wise, the number of positions funded in your budget is the same as it was last year. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Um. I would, are we prepared then to, to vote on this one? Not seeing objections, so I'm gonna do it. All right. May I have a roll call vote on moving forward with the PSAP Lit Interlocal twenty twenty-four budget request?
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Hawk.
No.
Counselor, sorry, Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Iv, uh sorry, Counselor Munson.
No.
Motion passed five to two. Thank you.
I, I don't think I got to vote.
Oh, I clicked your name by mistake. Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Thank you. Now the vote is five to two.
Oh my god.
Wow, this is how we act when the city folks come to visit us. This is really impressive. Thank you.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you. You too.
We are now at item eleven on our agenda. No, no, no. It shouldn't, it shouldn't have said that. Okay. Okay. Lots of conversation. Um so we reviewed all, everything at this point. And um. And it's set aside this time in case anyone is interested in um revisiting. Any budgets for further discussion. I will entertain any motions to do that, if that's something that we're interested in doing.
I don't have any motions, um just because I haven't honestly.
Yeah.
Haven't had the time to put them together. I've, I've had to do the day job, as I think all of you.
Yeah.
Um, so I, I'll, I'll hold them off to the uh, the work session, but I think. Mo, uh most of it was just small movement from uh various expenses to cable franchise. And then I think there were, I don't know whether anybody has any interest in um, at that point, any motions related to overtime, reducing overtime.
I might.
I might as well.
Okay. Um and I'm perfectly willing to, to hold off on that conversation. Go right ahead.
They don't want us to forget the highway department, that extra million dollars, whether we're going for a rainy day, whatever. It's, it's setting in their budget. And it, they're over budgeted. Uh by, I think it's right at that million dollars. Uh it, it's the same thing we did uh for the twenty twenty-three budget. And so that they could do more paving, so that they could accept the Community Crossing Grant. If they get the Community Crossing Grant, there's no money left to, to speak of to fill the puddles. So, let's not forget. Yep, ma, make a decision yes or no at some point in time.
Yeah, and I think that has to be part of the larger discussions, once we've had time to process. What we've looked at this week and last. Counselor McKim?
No, 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 finish your, your, I have another thing.
Oh, okay. No, that's fine. Um.
And, and, and the other thing to add to our list of things to discuss, uh, discuss at the work session on budget is possibly moving part of a position in the recorder's office. Um out of general.
Right. Well, and. Did she say that she was willing to do something with the? Um perpetuation fund?
I haven't talked to her since.
I haven't neither, so.
It's like.
Auditor Smith, Auditor Smith talked with her.
We spoke today and um she seemed amenable to doing half salary. Uh not whole, the whole salary. Um we did, we discussed that, so she may be coming back and making a proposal to you. It's very, very possible. Uh the other thing is.
I would think half a, half a salary would be quite reasonable.
Mm-hmm.
I would. Yes, um and I think she's a very frugal person, so I think she's, you know, making sure that it's, everything is doable and, and um.
Yeah.
And sustainable, because she's just, she's amazing person. Uh so anyway, we did, uh Bree had a comment on the highway, so I'm gonna let her. Talk.
Um just generally, I just want to remind the council that if um. The commissioners and council are agreeable, ARPA could be um a problem solver for some of these expenses that are eligible as well.
At least short term, you're correct. That's right. Um other ideas, thoughts, comments?
You know, with that comment had to do with. Uh some of the ARPA discussion that we had. Having to do with contract coverings, contract coverages or so forth. And, and that was a substantial amount of money that we could cover with ARPA. Even if we just covered it a couple of years, it would be a huge amount that would be left in County General. I know that's not, that was going to be everybody's last ditch. Choice. You didn't want to do it, but let's not forget that the opportunity is there.
Well, and similarly, I mean, you know, I, I would like us to at least consider. Some of the, the opioid settlement money. There, there's also, you know, we've got the ADs, uh we've got the jail contracts. Some of the items in the jail contract are directly related to issues covered by the opioid settlement, even for the, the restricted fund.
And there's, and there's revenue ongoing in that together fund for what, eighteen years or something? I forget how many years a lot. Was it eighteen?
And the opioid um settlement fund payments will come in for eighteen years under one of the agreements.
I mean, one of the positions covered in the jail contract was a substance use counselor. You know, why, why aren't we paying for that substance use, the, whatever the prorated amount for that substance use counselor, the opioids?
Well, and I want to add to that and say that we heard resoundingly from the sheriff and his team. That care, care, care was a huge part of some of the changes they're doing even now. And I think that. Uh that's, that, that is for certain and appropriate consideration, particularly given what all is. Uh I also want to say that. Again, I think it varies from beating every evening that I appreciate all the elected officials, including the recorder with the comments that she's made to the auditor. And our department heads who are looking hard or have looked hard at those dollars so that we can do what we need to do as a county for service. But also to take care of our employees as best as we are able. And I know that that has been the diligent work of all of us and. As part of this, the machinists that we're talking about again as we manage our money, but I think that also is just a huge. Thing that, that we should be grateful for as our people come together on that.
Counselor Munson? Oh, you're on mute. I can't hear you. Counselor Munson, you're on mute.
Okay, I can, I've only been able to barely hear what's going on for all these sessions and it's, it's very difficult. And it's, it's very difficult, um, and then I have a computer that doesn't switch. Uh, mute and video off and on very easily, so I apologize for that, that's on my end. Uh, the other is on our standard uh, microphone, audio. Uh, problem end. So. My uh, question is, when are we likely to be able to uh, discuss the opioid uh, settlement funds? And can we uh, do this in time to relate these to our uh, budget process? Anybody have a comment?
I have it scheduled for our work session as a topic of discussion, um. Which presumably would be soon enough, however, the guidance on how those funds are s- to be spent. Is not very detailed, from what I've heard. And so, um, I do know that. It might benefit us to have a conversation with the commissioners. Um, as to how to spend those funds. Counselor McKim.
The other, the other thing is, I, the jail medical contract doesn't even start until June or July, is that's that right?
Yes, that's true.
Okay.
And along the same lines, I do have a meeting scheduled with Advanced Correctional to talk about um, the quote that she provided at the jail. So I should have some additional information on that request for council.
I I guess what I'm saying is we have some time before that contract actually gets executed and then can get spent out. Uh, to do some research on this, but I, I definitely would like to push for us using, actually using those opioid funds.
Yeah.
And.
Please go ahead.
And and if we do that, then that four hundred and twenty-five. Uh, of the uh, correctional tax could be used for anything in the jail. To to reduce, so it doesn't have to be that particular thing. You know, so.
Right.
That could really help, then, that that's almost helping it by almost a million dollars or more. If if, if you take that four hundred and use it for something else. And what you're going to use it for, you send it over to the uh, opioid settlement. Musical chairs and marbles.
Yes, uh, we have received a text message from Lisa Ridge, so going back to the highway.
Yes.
Um, she said in moving forward to help the M V H budget. Uh, you can always move some salaries or parts of to Stormwater or Cune Bridge. Such as her salary, the highway engineer, and or the superintendent, so if you need to move funds. There, she has given that as an option as well.
To free up some money for paving.
Yes.
Thank you, appreciate that very much. Very much to Counselor Deckard's point about um, the all hands on deck approach that. Our department heads and elected officials have been taking, much appreciated. Are there um, any other budget topics that um. From the the reviews that you'd like to discuss?
I I just had, I guess I shouldn't have assumed, I just assumed that. Uh, staff was keeping track of when we said, well, we can move from here, we'll do that later. I'm hoping there is a list so that we're not forgetting what we were going to do later.
Yes, I've been making a list as we go, so.
My, my question um, is more of a logistical one that has to do with. September twenty-sixth and the agenda.
I was just gonna pull that up, so.
I feel like we've put a lot of things off to September twenty-sixth because. Of the amount of time we've spent in these meetings and missing a full regular session. And so I'm a little bit concerned about how much time we're gonna have. And how long that meeting's gonna be, and I thought maybe I. If I'm right, which I would like confirmation, that it's exceedingly long. Would council prefer to have a special se- session on the budget? Separate from the work session?
Well, what's on, I guess I wanna see the.
It's crazy.
But but what can be put, okay, I mean, we often just talk about things that don't, that we could possibly put off.
Um.
I guess.
Let me go ahead, we, we started, we started an agenda of requests that have come in. Um. So, um, there is a request uh, for that Phoenix closure. So the second phase is due for review at that time, um, there is a presentation of J F A C. Um, then we have several additional appropriations that were requested that we have moved. So there's um, commissioners. Several from the Health Department with regards to, um. Uh, grants. We have a tentative salary grid discussion as well with the Health Department. Uh, we have an additional appropriation from the jail with with regards to the funds needed for their personnel. Bec- due to that fifteen percent increase. Um. The highway, pardon.
Oh, is that just salary, we already did the appropriation.
Right, and it also includes overtime that that's in there, so that they've used up because of that increase that. Because we budgeted first, and then you guys uh, gave an increase, so they've moved monies around. Yeah.
The contract addition.
Right. Uh, the highway is requesting um, uh, additionals in the vituminous. The Auditor's Office is requesting a uh, in the contractual, we have a Parks Department. Um, fund to fund transfer that needs to be taken care of. And then we have on there an opioid discussion, a proposed uh, geo bond. Discussion is supposed to be ta- taking place that night as well. And then, um, what's not on here is also, um. I have not put anything with regards to, um. Any uh, decisions you're making with regards to budgets, uh, we're moving the fair one. Uh, there to be reviewed, I think there was another one, I made it.
We need a, we need a special session.
Oh, and health, health fund eleven sixty-one as well.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Okay, cuz I was gonna say, that's why I'm wanting to split it, okay. Starting to feel that way.
No, I'm not, anyone will. Proposing to cut it.
Is that an announcement?
Madam President.
Yes.
Okay, it seems to me one of the very big things that it, three of you folks have been working on for a long time. Is very reasonable to have a presentation of that. We're not gonna make any decision that night, I would hope we aren't gonna make any decision until the three of you have made your presentation.
Right.
So why cannot the three of you make a presentation at one of your, at the end of the meeting or at a special meeting, other three of you? Would take all of us to be there, make it, and be done. With that, cuz that is a big portion. That you've worked really hard for, so don't try to slam it in with fifty other things, because nobody wants to hear it, the fifty other things. I mean, it's special.
Yeah, well, I I hear you, I think the the cat will be out of the bag mostly at the the final J F A C meeting, and so. Um. Um.
That might be it, we we can all listen in.
Yeah, yeah, right, I don't know that that is actually gonna take maybe as long as it seems. I still feel that we should have a separate meeting for some of the budget resolution. Um. So looking at a calendar would, and we don't, we can certainly wait and do a doodle poll. But we really do need to get it quickly, is next week unreasonable?
As long as we have forty-eight hours to advertise. That's how soon we can put it together.
Okay, so, would you, general, general feeling on council? Next week or a second meeting later in the week of the twenty-fifth? Ish?
The nineteenth is this upcoming Tuesday, and that works for me.
That's too soon.
It's too soon.
Yeah, not enough time.
I I could do either Thursday and Friday or the next, I I'd be.
Which, what are you saying, Thursday or Friday, which ones?
Oh, sorry, I'm saying next Thursday or Friday, or anytime following.
I would, I would like to say, we have to get budget amounts in. So that we can have them posted and advertised, um. We, we would like to have that done by the twentieth, but our drop dead date is the twenty-first, that we have to have things into Gateway and posted. So I would prefer an earlier, you know, like.
The nineteenth is too early.
No, what I. No, what I'm saying is, in order to have, we have to post what we think we're going to budget. And in order to have ten days before the public hearing, so. Yeah, so you go ahead.
So that's the advertising total, which we're going to inflate anyhow, but we have to have at least an idea so we don't go over.
Yeah.
I thought we 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 were gonna have a detailed discussion of the cost of living at some point, but it doesn't sound like that's gonna happen for.
Well, I have this my next question on, under this current item. Is, do we wanna talk about COLA right now, but I have to be honest, I don't feel like we can go very far in a COLA discussion. Until I've sunk. My head around, become very close with what we've.
What were we thinking, Bree, uh, that we would do?
We were planning to inflate personnel about twenty-five percent, and then the rest of the budget fifteen, twenty, so that that's typically what we do. So I mean, there, you have cushion.
Yeah, so.
But we, but it's still a lot of work to.
It's a lot of work to do what?
Just to make all those changes and get the correct numbers entered once, um, once you do make the final decisions, so we like to get a head start.
Right.
I think regardless, we're gonna need a special work session.
And I guess my point was, I'd rather do it next week than rather than wait till the week of the twenty-fifth was my.
Tell me why Tuesday?
Sorry, that's what I was trying to get at, so.
Why not Thursday the twenty?
Well, I mean, would you even be able to get any, uh, get all the numbers together by Tuesday if we do it again on Tuesday?
And can we not just recess this meeting to whatever meeting and you don't have to advertise it?
That's true.
Well, I didn't hear what she said.
Suggested just recessing this meeting and then we don't have to advertise. The auditor is thinking this as well.
Well, Tuesday would be acceptable.
Will we have? Answers to our questions by then.
What?
Which question is? What exactly is keeping you from making you? It's all, can you hear me?
No.
I don't know what's going on. Can you hear me? Okay, I'm not exactly sure what is keeping you from making your COLA decision tonight. Because we, and and I'll tell you why, we have plenty of cash balance and we have plenty of ju- of um, reserve funds in the rainy day that we could cover it. If you honestly believe that we cannot pay that bill, that that employee bill, then I understand postponing it. But we can draw that out into a long discussion, every employee in the county can show up for that next meeting that you're gonna have. And it's going to end up being a very long discussion based on everybody wanting to speak. So I guess my question is, how close do you think we really are that? I mean, how, what is a differential that you feel like from that? If if we went with the eight and a half percent, the differential that you think that we're. Is in, is in question?
We're. A lot of people, though, I I think there may be a difference among the council, for example, as to whether or not we prefer that eight point five percent. Even if, even if we stipulate eight point five percent, whether it's eight percent, eight point five percent across the board. If it's eight points five percent, uh, paid out as a flat amount to everybody. If it is, as Wiss recommends, the, a a different uh, increase uh, per per job series. So for example, maybe a higher percentage for comments, um, I mean, there are different ways, even if we stipulate eight point five percent. There are different ways that we might wanna uh, uh, approach that, and there are, and.
The reason I'm asking this is we can move ahead with, we can move ahead by putting these numbers into. Uh, Gateway and advertising them ahead of time, if you like, if you have a do- we will not exceed number. Like, does that make any sense? We have to advertise a higher budget. If we do not, they'll cut it and and we, and you vote for a higher budget, they will cut it back to what we advertise.
So advertise, advertise very high.
That's what.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
I I was just gonna say, I, I mean, I, I'll say it again, we've had folks that have come forward. Given us options, we have a, 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 our highway department. Um, director is literally texting in results on things we could move around.
It's interfering with me.
Maybe perhaps this would not thirty-five, forty, we, there's lots of different options, and so I'm saying as a person that is charged with doing this. I'd like to have kind of some numbers in writing with some other things fleshed out, the advertising thing, that's something that, to me, that you all have to figure that out. I have to make decisions on what I can do responsibly for those employees, of which I'm charged to make sure they get everything they can. So again, I I don't wanna blow the doors off, and I don't think, and I will be, to be honest, I don't think we'd make. Many decisions kinda on the fly like that anyway, so we've got, we gotta do our job, I remember one December, we were in here. Working on things while people were going on break, we're not close to that at all, we won't be, we cannot do that again. But I think we can give us another minute or two on this one, cuz we have been working hard towards.
Thank you for articulating what we're thinking, appreciate that.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes. Any of you, I mean, you.
Um, to throw a recall in the next week plan, though, I'm looking at the calendar uh, for county meetings. And it appears on the nineteenth, the plan commission is in this room at five thirty. On the twentieth, there's a redevelopment commission at four thirty, and then the room is um, booked from five thirty to seven on the Thursday. For the women's commission, so. The Wednesday's redevelopment.
That's certainly true, could we offer the the ca- council conference room, is that big enough?
Uh, are th- they're on cats?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that's fine with me, I mean, I don't.
No, I think he's just making sure that they have cats and everything in there, I think it's fine, um. Monday is J F A C.
Monday is J.
Yeah. Um, well, we're gonna recess this meeting. And.
In order to not advertise, you have to state the date that you're reconvening.
I'm, I'm going to, and just to.
Okay.
Just to breathe, sorry, half second here.
All right.
Um, but before we do that, is there anything else that? That we need to talk about tonight? Yes.
I have a non-budget issue.
What?
Sorry. So last night, um, during the, uh, during this meeting. Um, there was a discussion of the assessor's job dis- Um, there was a discussion of the assessor's job descriptions, and the council voted to move the um provided job descriptions to WIS. Prior to the PAC meeting. However, in communicating with the assessor's office, um Michelle was advised that the job descriptions have been redone again. So the council has not seen the job descriptions that would potentially be going to WIS. The copies that you provided are not the most recent copies. So I, I guess I'm just trying to get some council feedback on how you wanna proceed. Because last night you voted to send job descriptions to WIS, but now that's changed.
I I received a a phone call from Lisa Surfers saying that they had a meeting today. They were finalizing all the changes. Uh Judy was gonna take them home over the weekend and um. And hopefully I would have them on Monday, so, but that, I'm, I don't know, so.
I I mean, my my suggestion is that when they are actually finished, that they just be, they be sent out to the council. And then at whatever our, I mean, if if anybody objects to sending them on to WIS. We we can make that objection at the next meeting, because we already know that WIS is not gonna be able to deal with them right away. They they already stated they can't, so. We've got a little bit of time, let's just get us the 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 final version, and if anybody wants to put the brakes based on anything.
Well, we just wanna make sure both, that you knew ahead of time that they were in the process of changing them since you uh received the original copies.
Yeah, thank you. Back to the recessing of the meeting, yes.
Is there anything that we can do to help you? That's where I was trying to get to, to make it easier. Is there anything you want from us to make the time shorter between now and your postponed meet, or your recessed meeting?
Counselor Iverson?
Uh, one of the things that uh 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 Bree uh had mentioned was uh some, some uh options for ARPA. Uh, it would be nice to have those enumerated. Uh, I I have some in my head, but I don't know that that's comprehensive. Uh, that would be helpful to know kind of your recommendations, since you're so familiar with those treasury guidelines.
Sure, I'll put together a list and send it your way.
Thank you so very much.
You're very welcome.
And similarly, a list, if it was kept, I've got my notes, but um if anyone has notes on the things that we said we were trying to move, and then some of them we did, and then some of them we just said, hey, good idea, let's talk. So um, we could work to get everybody stuck maybe in one spot. And so we have.
Promotion written out ahead of time.
No script.
There's no shame in getting it right, but writing it down.
And also I'd like to see a list, provide you with a list that has been cut out to help make room for uh raise money. I think a total amount um where everybody has given money back in general fund. I think that would be nice to say, this is how much.
I think that's what Kim's been giving us every day, so she can just make the total. And then, yeah, that would, that would be nice, too.
Maybe we should look at schedules.
That's where I'm getting, um. So next week. This room is booked like Monday through Thursday, it sounds like.
Yes, that's what it looks like, yes, looking at the calendar.
Who is on Tuesday?
Plan Commission.
Plan Commission.
And then redevelopment on Wednesday and Women's Commission on Thursday.
Is Wednesday moving redevelopment okay, or are we only considering the one? Moving. Are you available on Wednesday?
I'm available on Wednesday.
Can we meet in the county council room? We're not that big of a group.
We could.
Excuse me, redevelopment commission you starts at four thirty and usually runs about an hour.
I'm just not available.
Well.
I'm not taking public comment. There's not public comment at this.
This is more work. Is the.
Is anyone unavailable on Thursday?
Hold on. I'm suited until nine.
I can change my.
I I am hearing from someone who is offering that the R D C is small, I'm sure they could move.
Well, also, the R D C meeting is even calendar to six o'clock, so if you started immediately following.
That's what I was gonna say, we could start at six o'clock rather than five.
But on the September twentieth is the R D C meeting, right? We would be without counsel again.
September twentieth is also the.
I think that might be unhelpful.
I I can, I can make it up. I can move, I can blow off.
Are we? Wednesday?
So here's the deal on Wednesday, Commissioner Githens announced yesterday, and we, I believe we all got the email about the um Thompson site at Summit at six thirty next Wednesday. There are two sessions. There is one on the twentieth, and then there's also another one that following Sunday, the twenty fourth, at RCA Park.
They may have to pitch in on that first one while we do our.
I I think uh uh obviously the nature of the business is to get the business of the council done, stand in our lanes, do what we gotta do. And so I, I would think that the next step would be the twentieth, yeah, they're doing theirs and we're doing ours. So if the twentieth works here, then I would, my suggestion, that has the voice of reason. I'm out of juice.
I I can do it this way.
Okay, would you make a motion to, to, I think that's what has to happen, right?
No, I think who is the sheriff?
That that sounds great.
But can I ask for them before we do that?
I was dancing.
No, I just wanted to uh see if Michelle can produce uh, ma- make sure she knows what kinds of numbers we need. She's, she's already working, I know, on the attorney's numbers. I, it, you know, it sounds like now we also need to have an updated grid for the um, you know, if we were to give eight point five, and other councils may have other numbers. I'm saying, I support eight point five. So I would like to see a grid for eight point five across the board. And eight point five paid out as a, as a flat amount. And we can then kind of interpolate between the two, because there might be various options. And then also the fiscal impact, which I know will be the same either way, uh for all of the funds in the frozen levy and the P S.
Okay, um, yes, I am, I kinda sorta already have the grid set up, so I. Yeah, I I've got it ready, I just gotta plug in numbers. Um, I, I'll work on the fiscal impact. Um, what I'm currently working on is the attorney grids with regards to um where, where they're at right now. So you know how many are in each classification, thirty five and forty, as as well as then. Now, I'll use an eight point five um to give you that fiscal impact. Um, there was mention by both group, the public as well as the prosecutor. How um other counties are hiring in at a base of like seventy and eighty. Is that a target amount you would like to see in the attorney grids? And what it would look like, how to get there as, as a hiring in kinda, kinda place? Or that kinda thing? And also, um, I'm working on the comets. And I just did a review of all the comet positions and where they're at on the grids. At, at this current time, we have no Comet A positions in our salary ordinance. Everything is B, C, and D. So um I had heard um from some people. Um, maybe trying to get that bottom line of the comets uh up to at least a twenty dollar minimum at the minimum so- spot. So eight point five may put them there, but um that's where I'm at right now on. So I'll just add those to my, my list, but I didn't know what you wanted to see as far as numbers with regards to attorneys. Other than the eight point five.
I guess I would like to see in, in writing some of those other reference salaries to to the surrounding counties. And I, and I agree, you know, what Fort Wayne does is not really that relevant. What, it is relevant, Lawrence County does is relevant. Because our attorneys could easily drive down there, just like Councilor Hoss.
My guidance is gonna be along the same lines as, as reaching out to the department heads in the affected departments. Because they, the, the prosecutor, the public defender, because they're the ones that are trying to recruit. And having trouble with it, and they're gonna have access to the numbers that that Councilmember McKim just referenced.
Is five P M. okay on Wednesday? Five P M., is it okay Wednesday?
Five P M.
Counselor Munson?
Did you just? I tried to to comment earlier. Thank you for asking me, but it's already decided now. It's, it's Wednesday, right? At five?
We're hoping it's Wednesday. What are you saying about Wednesday?
No, I was, I was going to um to urge uh Thursday. And I didn't understand why we did, why that was, was uh.
Oh, cuz I didn't say anything. I rose, erased my hand. I I. I have.
Jeff can't make it. Okay, thanks.
Oh, blame me.
Kate can't make it.
Seeing as how Kate can't make it Wednesday at five, sounds great.
So Cheryl, are you able to attend on Wednesday or participate via Zoom? Oh, Cheryl. If you're there, could you let us know if you are able to attend on Wednesday?
I could, I, I will be able to attend on Wednesday by Zoom. But I wanted to tell you that I thought it was very important for me to try and have some presence at the um, at the meeting on Wednesday and Sunday. Because I'm the one who pushed the commissioners on this uh first. And um. I just was hoping to find a way to get there, but. I will just um hang out and, and get on my phone on Zoom and see you Wednesday.
Okay.
It sounds like the staff is trying to push us to do it later in the, in the day.
So that we don't have to move anybody out of this room? Is that why? Are you suggesting six instead of five because you don't wanna have to move the R D C?
I don't think we can move them, but I think we can say immediately following R D C.
Okay.
That sounds great.
Okay, we'll do six P M.
Yeah, let's do that.
Six P M. on Wednesday.
Okay.
This meeting is officially recessed until six P M. on Wednesday, September twentieth, here in the Nat U Hill Room.
Jeff K. Wilt.
Thank you.